Three, four, five, six. We only have six. Where's Janice?
I haven't heard anyone else. Janice and Jim. Jim's been the guy. Both of them, okay. So everybody's here now.
Good evening, everyone. Let's go ahead and start the council study session. And we do have a couple of citizens-
Hi ma'am, can you give the date?
This is October 16th, 2017. Citizens comment on agenda items, so we'll start out since it's study session. We go ahead and have those at the beginning of the meeting. And I have Dick Orca. Dick, would you come forward to the podium and make your comment, please?
Assuming you can hear me okay. Better? Thank you for letting me come. I'm very short order and the gentleman that had asked me to be here doesn't seem to have been able to make it yet, so I want to talk about the late entry to ideas on the Anderson Park Primary Baseball Field part of that project. Oh, I'm sorry. Dick Orca?
Andrew.
One zero zero three three West 30th Avenue, Paramount Heights. I've lived there for 53 years this month. I was born in Lakewood and lived my entire life there before I got married and moved over to Wheat Ridge, across town rivals. Christie's parents were friends of mine, clear back in the school days. So, I go here a long time. I love Wheat Ridge. I've been involved. This is probably where I'll die. My kids went to Wheat Ridge High School. I think the Anderson Baseball Field and my involvement with it is that I've had a love of baseball since I was eight years old. I have coached baseball for the last 32 years at collegiate level. I was an assistant coach at Wheat Ridge High School in the 90s. I've had on the program that I run a large number of players that have come through it, many of which are now citizens and family people in Wheat Ridge. I had 28 players in my program that have played professional baseball as high as the major league level. That's all the material. What is important is that baseball fields are becoming archaic for the number of people that we have in our community and all across Denver. It's a great sport. It's a development. And I think that to take this park and destroy the baseball side of it may be a mistake that we'll look back and wish we hadn't done as a city. As I recall, this park was purchased during the mayoralship of Hank Steitz for the purpose of being a baseball park. It's suitable for play for 14-year-olds on up to and including adult baseball. It's a beautiful setting. It doesn't interfere or doesn't have to interfere with the other agendas that are there, the park, the soccer field, the picnic area. And the cost of that field, which I know has been in the study presented as being a very difficult thing to overcome. There are organizations like the U.S. AAA Baseball that I know would make an offer for the park, lock, stock, and barrel, to buy it and maintain everything about it. So, I'm not sure all of that came into the study groups or was able to be brought out in some of the earlier meetings that have been held with the public. As recently as this weekend, there were high school teams from across the country that participated at Wheat Ridge High School and Anderson Park showcased by college coaches coming to see those and then a couple of cases professional scouts observing them. Those are the only two parks that are conveniently situated here in Wheat Ridge suitable for that type of activity. I don't think the park has to maintain lights, which is one of the things in the study that suggests it's a cost-objective type thing. The park could stand on its own as a compatible part of the overview that you're looking at with or without lights. But I will remind you that it's one of the few lighted parks in this part of the area and they are fewer and farther between. So, for what it's worth, I would like to hope that we could decide at this late date that we could bring a more compatible bit of information on a future meeting. I recognize that time is growing close and we're coming in maybe a little bit late on this in our posture, but I want to go on record as saying that I'm sure we could, on a council meeting, probably like you're so many times faced with, probably fill the rooms with people from Wheat Ridge that would give supportive material as to why this should be possibly reconsidered. And I'm not sure in the study group that, I mean, not the study group, but the research that you paid to have done with taxpayers' money from the bond issue and that will be taxpayers' money that goes into this project, I'm not sure that they covered that part of it. So, for what it's worth, that's what I want to get on the record and I'd like to be advised of anything that we can do in the future to carry this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Orca. I failed to mention that we have two council members not here tonight. That's all. We have one more person who wanted to speak, which is Guy Namiach.
Guy Namiach, 3650 Ward Road, Wheat Ridge. Good evening. So, I also happen to be on the Parks and Recs Commission and just wanted to share some points about this project as we've done with Discovery Park and we did with the Fruitdale Off Leash Dog Park and as of late, we did with the Hopper Hollow Park. We saved the Big Bang, actually, for the Anderson Park. And that was really to go out and talk to the community. We have spent the last four and a half months having community meetings, three full-blown-out community meetings, personalized invitations to key park users. And we brought in the community to ask them what they wanted to see in the park. Everything from, we even had somebody ask for a cat park. I asked for a skating rink. I was shot down. But, we asked them what they wanted to see, from the amphitheater to multi-use field. We asked the community what they wanted to see and what the park would look like. And we came back with different drawings and so forth. But, we even created a special oversight committee. It was created to further honor our Wheat Ridge voters and for their approval and the support of the 2E initiative. So, this has been going on for four and a half months. That's it. Thanks for your support and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to staff reports. Other than our- Okay. Let's go right on to Anderson Park.
Thank you. As you know, we're here tonight to present the 2E Bond Project for Anderson Park and the Preferred Concept Plan. A contract was awarded to MIG and BRS in March of 2017. And since that time, the consultants and staff have been working to complete a well-thought-out concept plan based on public input process. We've also completed quite a bit of due diligence related to the amenities in the park where they're located, et cetera. And we did have focus groups, an open house, a pop-up event at our performance in the park, as well as a community meeting last Tuesday. So, the handout that you have are the results of the input we received from the community meeting as well as a letter that was handed to me at that meeting representing the input on the baseball field or lack of a baseball field in the concept plan. So, as part of your presentation tonight, you'll also see a completion of a probable costs and location of the amenities as well as redesign of the buildings. The direction we're looking for tonight is a consensus to move the preferred plan forward for formal adoption and that currently is scheduled for next Monday, October 23rd, at your regular meeting by resolution. Next steps, if that is to occur, will be to move forward with contracts for the construction documents and then the bidding process. And our consultants will go over a schedule at the end of their presentation related to the project. So, I'd like to introduce Paul Kuhn from MIG, Samantha Suter from MIG, and then Craig Baugh from BRS Architects. And I always like to say, we're always pleased to work with Craig. He was the lead architect on our Recreation Center. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Paul Kuhn with MIG. We are the prime, we hold the prime contract for this project and we're landscape architects and park planners in this event or this project. And as Joyce mentioned, that Craig is responsible for the Anderson Building and Bath House design process part of this. We're thrilled to be here. It's the kind of culmination of a seven-and-a-half-month process where we've all worked very hard, staffs worked very hard, communities worked very hard. And we think this plan really represents the desire for the community. As we say, we're holding the pencil for you folks and we've just kind of recorded what we've heard. So, I'll start out with a quick overview. As far as what we'll cover tonight, we have, we want to review the public outreach process and findings and Sam will cover that in a second. I will then talk to you about the Preferred Concept Plan for the park site itself, basically everything outside of the Anderson Building. And we'll also get into the opinion of cost for that particular part of the project. And Craig will then talk about the Anderson Building and Bath House renovation, the approach for that, and the costs associated with it. And he will finish with the implementation schedule. And then we open it up for questions, I believe, after that, Joyce. So, with that, I'll have Sam talk about public outreach and give you an update on that.
Thanks, Paul. Again, I'm Samantha Suter with MIG. So, the first step really in the public engagement process for the park renovation plan was the bond initiative. It was a voter-approved bond issue. And it was the first step in engaging the public on what they wanted to see. It was passed and the city, in so doing, was committed to renovating the Anderson Pool and the Anderson Pool locker rooms and building and then some amenities of the park. And then, as Joyce and Guy pointed out, the public outreach process really has gone on for the past four, four-and-a-half months. We kicked that off with a series of focus groups and an open house, June 7th and 8th. The focus groups were organized by interest. So, we had park users, pool and building users came to one focus group. We had residents and local business owners attend another one. We had special events organizers attend a focus group. And then we met with park staff, the maintenance staff, the park staff and planners. We followed those two days up with a public open house that we held in the Anderson Building. And I'll go through that in more detail in a second. We also had a master plan advisory committee meet throughout the process. That was made up of city staff and citizens and we engaged them in two key points along the process. And we used them as a sounding board as we developed concepts to make sure we were moving in the right direction. In August 2nd, we attended the Hot Tomatoes Concert in Anderson Park and we had a pop-up community workshop. We had multiple or two different stations there. I'll go into more details of that in a second as well. And then, as Paul and Joyce and Guy mentioned, we had our final community workshop last week, which you have the summary in front of you of what we heard there. And then also, the past maybe month or two, we've started hearing emails from the bike advocacy group submitting their support for what you'll see in the concepts later on. And then, the city also, the park staff, had this robust public outreach notification campaign. They posted information on the city website, on Facebook, in the Anderson Building itself, in the rec center itself. And then, they sent out an email to their listserv of approximately 4,500 contacts on that listserv. So, now to dive into more of these events and what we heard. We start with the focus groups. And we heard things like, people really love the park. They love the open and natural feel that they currently see in the park. They love that it's a park within a park, is something we heard. Some of the special events organizers wanted it to be more festival-friendly. They talked about circulation, getting a large amount of vehicles into and out of the site at one time is a challenge that they're currently experiencing. We heard from a lot of the soccer users. They would like a place to warm up before a soccer game. They would like another competitive-sized field. It seems like they have a big demand, is what we heard with that group. And then, in the open house, we had a number of stations. We had stations set up to go through the existing conditions of both the park and the building. We had an area set up just for people to give comments. And then, we had what we were calling a park program station. So, we were asking people, how do you want to use this park? And we had sheets like this. They were printed out on 11 by 17 and they were taped to, I think, three tables. And we had all these different concepts and we let people vote on their top five park uses that they wanted to see. And this is the ranking of what we heard. I'll highlight the top 10 or so users or uses. People wanted to see a large performance space. They said that that's one of their favorite ways to use the park currently. And they wanted a more formal way to engage with concerts. They also wanted to be able to touch the river. They wanted a small creek access so they could get down and really experience that treasured amenity. They also voted for a large creek access. We think this is probably out of scale for Anderson Park, but it was something people voted highly that they want to see. The bike skills was very popular. We threw this out. We threw out a lot of different ideas. Excuse me. Because we wanted to put a lot of options on the table to see what people liked. And this was something that rose to the, rose with everyone's vote and it was something that we weren't expecting. That was pretty interesting to see how people came out to support this concept. Again, a medium-sized performance space. People said they really liked the look and feel. They liked how there were the pavers on the ground so people can get up and dance. And then, as Guy mentioned, people were pretty excited about the ice skating rink. We ended up ruling this out due to budgetary constraints, but this was an amenity people were pretty excited to talk about and to think about. We heard a lot of support for expanded play, both universal access, so for children with disabilities, nature play, which is more natural elements that kids can climb on and kind of get dirty, education, environmental education and awareness. And then, a zip line was something that rose to the top as well. And then, people also wanted a more formal picnic shelter. They expressed a recognition that the current picnic shelters are old and need a little love. And so, they said seeing a renovated picnic shelter would be pretty nice. And then, people wanted to have more formal circulation pattern and path throughout the park. They said when you're at one side of the park, getting to the other doesn't feel intentional. You have to either walk through the field or you have to go around. Mothers with strollers or seniors want to have more of a formal path that can connect them from one element to the next. We also heard a desire for a large multi-use area. And this was something we talked to the focus groups about and staff as well, of having a space that could be programmed with a variety of uses was a strong desire that we heard throughout the process. Some of the written comments, like I said, we had these voting stations so people could rank what they wanted to see. And then, we just opened it up for general comments. I won't read all of these, but some I wanted to highlight. The bathrooms feel too far away. That was something that people expressed a lot of concern about throughout the process. And then, as I mentioned, the festival users talked about the parking and the car circulation and how challenging that can be during a large influx of cars. And then, the last comment I'll highlight is that people really love this park. They love that it feels really natural and open. And it's clearly a cherished amenity in the community. So, we don't want to do anything so drastic that will change people's love for this park. Now, to move on to the pop-up workshop. We had two stations. So, we had one station at the picnic shelter where the Hot Tomatoes set up and we had one station at the Anderson Building itself. And within those two stations, we had, I guess, those two different areas, we had four stations. So, one showed the concepts for the Anderson Building and the Bath House, which Craig will go through in more detail. Another one had the Anderson Park concepts, which Paul will show the preferred concept that emerged out of that process. We had a station where people could prioritize additional park program elements and then another station for people to provide general comments. So, we had three concepts for the park and people voted overwhelmingly for concept number one. And the main difference between this concept and the two others that you'll see was this expanded play. So, people expressed an interest in really wanting to see more play options. They wanted the playground to be larger than it currently is. The concept number two was the middle vote. And the primary difference between this concept is the bike skills area. Like I, like we heard in the first community workshop, people really liked this bike skills idea. And then, the third concept got the least amount of votes. And you can't really see it here, but this is the area with our multi-purpose field. And in this concept, we overlaid the amphitheater on that multi-purpose field. And people didn't like that. They said, separate that. We also heard that people wanted to, which leads me into this next word, where do you want to see the amphitheater? And what we heard is people really wanted to see it pretty much where it is already. This was a discovery for us throughout the process. We kept thinking we wanted to locate it somewhere around here. But when we were there and we experienced the Hot Tomatoes concert, we realized that it's very nice seeing music in the evening within the trees. And that's what people heard and what people, or what we heard and what people told us. So, you can see this is the preferred location. And E was about two-thirds of the people voted for E. A was up here, close to the road. People did not like that option. They thought that the noise could compete with the traffic. And we also asked, what do you want to see? If budget allows, because at this point in the process, we started crunching numbers and we knew that the budget was going to be tight. So, we asked people, if there is room for the budget as we get into construction costs, what do you want to see? And about 21% of people said they wanted to see additional creek access. About 19% said they want to see more sidewalks and walking paths. And then, you could see some of the other elements that people wanted to see, more picnic shelters, expanded play. And then, again, we had comments which echoed what we heard throughout the process again, similar to what we heard early on where the bathrooms, the circulation, and just making sure that what we have can be used more functionally and people have a strong sense of safety. So, with that, I'll let Paul come back up and walk you through the preferred option.
So, how does all this work and input that we heard translate into a preferred plan or what we're calling the Preferred Concept Plan? And really, it's based on everything that went before tonight or before this last step. Starts with the bond promises, because obviously, that's what the voters of Wheat Ridge said as the bar first and foremost. And once again, we'll repeat some of those. These to be festival-friendly, the Anderson Building renovation is key to that, multi-use sports field and place of baseball, parking lot improvements and resurfacing, replacing old infrastructure, and then upgrading small and large picnic pavilions were the key things included in the bond issue initiative. So, with that, there was a list of existing site features that we heard needed to be preserved or replaced. And we'll go through that in the plan itself, but you can see them all listed here. Each one of those was kept in place largely where they are, in some cases as they are. In other cases, for instance, the large picnic shelter, as you'll see, the existing picnic shelter is going to take a different form in the preferred plan. And of course, it was all based on the input that we received in the community outreach process that Sam outlined. And lastly, there are technical things that had to be resolved regarding infrastructure and flood plain. And so, we didn't want to forget that loose side of that. Obviously, we have to stay within the requirements of those elements as we implement the park renovation plan. And hopefully, you had a chance to look through this in your package that you received and could take time to look at the plan. As you can see, we've got all of the features called out by boxes and the boxes are color-coded with white being the existing, purple being the uses or facilities improvements that are included in the current budget, and blue being things that we'd like to include if money allows. And then, we had one last piece, which is an opportunity area for the bike skills area that you see here, basically an area that's reserved for that use should it happen. So, quick orientation, 44th Avenue is on the north side. Clear Creek comes in along the south part of the park and then comes up the west side. And we have the existing Parks and Forestry Administration building here and the parking lot associated with that. We have the Anderson Building, Bath House and Pool Complex and the parking lot associated with that in this area. We have the Parks and Forestry Shops on the west edge and the yard associated with that, the storage yard for all the equipment. We have the existing soccer field in this location. That basically is left as-is, as was the pool. No improvements for the pool. The restroom building in this location, once again, left as-is, although because of the hail damage, we expect to see a new roof on that. The existing play area is here and once again, that's left in place. From a circulation standpoint, we have the main north-south entry drive. Generally, left as-is with a couple modifications I'll get to in a second. The south parking lot, again, left as-is with some improvements for improving the accessible parking. The north parking lot is left in place. And the north turf area field is left for festivals, if need be, and the basketball court. As far as the improvements that we will be incorporating into the preferred plan if it's adopted, one of the main ones is about the use field that you see here between the north parking lot and the south parking lot. Has been set where the baseball field is currently located. It would be a, we'll get into that. We have more detail of that later in this presentation and we'll talk more about it. But that was by far the best location for that and the most cost-effective way of implementing that feature. We have the two creek access points that the community was excited about and those would be Crusher Fine Pass, Soft Service Pass would be provided to provide access. Again, a small cluster of boulders that people can actually get down and come in contact with the river. And we think those would be very popular facilities. The other major piece is the performance stage in this location. But it's not just a performance stage, it's a performance stage and picnic shelter. And again, we'll show you more on that in the next couple of slides. The audience viewing area is to the north of that facility, about where the concerts are currently held now and where the old picnic shelter is located. And the main reason that people love that location was the existence of the mature trees, provided shade during the summer months and really made it comfortable for concert-goers. Another major element that's included in this plan is the, and a little harder to see, easier to see if you can actually go into the PowerPoint, is the construction of new paths along the west side of the entry drive, north-south entry drive to the Anderson Building. And another path along the west side and south side of the multi-use field. And both of those would create, would connect that to the Greenway Trail, thereby creating a couple of different lengths of walking pass loops so people can really enjoy a walk through the park. And equally as important, there's now an accessible route, a paved path up to the restroom for all your major events and for the performance space. So, those are the key features of the current plan. We are showing a picnic shelter and an enhanced play area here currently. That's a bit alternate. We'll cover that in a second. Those that be tacked on to or added to the existing facility- Those that be tacked on to or added to the existing bike facility and something that the community was very desired to have. We have a second picnic shelter associated with the multi-use field and we have additional walking paths that we could put in if we had the budget available and bids come in favorably. And last of all, is the space reserved for the bike park. And once again, this plan was developed based on what we heard from the public outreach and bond promises and it was a collaborative design process, digital designing charades with staff where we, in the community, the master plan advisory group where we actually had people direct us during the design. And of course, maintenance and operations was a critical feature and a critical aspect in everything we do. As Sam mentioned, that impacted the, you know, the choice of not including an ice rink or an ice trail in the process. So to highlight a couple of the key features in the plan, the renovations to the parking lots, both parking lots for the Parks and Forestry Administration Building and the bathhouse, both of those basically scraped, old asphalt removed, new road base put down where necessary and new asphalt put in its place. And parking has been reconfigured, especially in the, on the north side, to make it work better for the uses that we have on site right now. And one thing I didn't mention is we do have a couple of crossing points where we can, we have pedestrian crossings that are highlighted, one down near the main restroom, a larger one, you'll see that on our plan, and this one on the north side, although we're thinking we might move it down to this location to better align with the access to the Anderson Building. And one of the main things we've done is we've really improved access to parking. Right now, you can only get into the Anderson Building parking lot in these two locations and by punching in two access points to the Administration Building parking and improving the access off 44th, we think now the parking works better and will be much more functional during peak use during the summer months and certainly during your special events. Also provided less drop-off for large groups and we've enhanced the drop-off area and the entryway into the Anderson Building and also to create an outdoor space for the Anderson Building. And so that will allow parents to be able to pick up a child at the end of the day or at the end of the pool as it closes and gives people a place to wait for that to happen. And that was one of the things that we heard often from the pool users. Lastly is the multi-use field, well, a second from last. We have the multi-use field, which is basically a tabletop, natural grass surface that can be striped in any number of configurations. Right now, we see it primarily being used for practice. We do a lot of park master planning for communities and one thing we always hear is there's never enough, there's never enough green space for practice for sport groups. And so that is something that this would, this would provide the community. It will not be lighted. This is in Longmont at Sandstone Ranch. We do not intend to light this facility for several reasons, including cost and being neighbor friendly. The other thing we'd like to address is the performance stage group picnic concept. And you have a new graphic that we produced since we sent you the PowerPoint that you're seeing here. And that is a 3D model that we developed to show the idea of not only a performance stage, like you see in this precedent image, it's raised a couple of feet and has a place where a band could set up and have a concert, but it also has a couple of wings attached to it that would be pick up the use that's in the current group picnic shelter and put it in with this dual-use facility. And what that does, it means that during the normal park function during the day and on weekends, you can have group picnics in this beautiful new building and it becomes a great concert setting during your weekday concerts during the summer months. And of course, it all is oriented towards this long scene area. So our cost really covered, my notes here, I'm sorry, our cost covered all of the things you heard. Obviously, we have to start with the removal of the existing facilities and removal of the existing facilities and we have to repair the site for the new improvements and all of that is included in the cost estimate. We've got the performance stage, pedestrian connectivity is improved, multi-use field, upgrade the infrastructure, including the irrigation mainline for the park. The multi-use field would have a brand-new irrigation system so that would function effectively. And there's targeted upgrades for landscaping. Our cost also includes soft costs for unexpected things and so the contingency is available during construction, both from a cost estimating standpoint going forward and during construction. And of course, we have the bid alternates we described. And as of now, the park itself is at about $2.33 million and that includes everything that we've described up to this point. And if money was available, we could pick any number, one of the three alternates. Obviously, we'd love to have the expanded play and picnic shelter. We're not sure we can fit that in, but certainly the, maybe an expanded additional sidewalks and path area would be a possibility or perhaps another picnic shelter. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Craig to talk about the Anderson Building.
Hello, I'm Craig Doc with Parker Rinker Seacat Architecture. I'm going to walk you through the proposed changes for the Anderson Building and the bathhouse. Now, when we began the project, we had really two objectives. First was to modernize and the second was to optimize. So work with what we have and just make it better. So we basically broke this into three different buildings and three different projects. The way to think about it is the first is the bathhouse itself, that's the blue one. The second is the link, or what we call the link, between the bathhouse and the Anderson Building. And finally, the Anderson Building itself. Now, each of these buildings was built in a different era with a different construction methodology and all of it is past its useful age, as you know. But what we discovered as we got into it is that the bones of the building are usable. We just have to go in and have a different approach for each one of these three buildings. And so that's what I'll walk you through. I'm going to start with the bathhouse itself. So what we decided to do here is we recognized that it's built like a bombshell, which is a good thing. All we have to do is gut the entire thing and start from the inside out. And so what you'll see is that the part that is black or dark gray here, those are all the pool mechanicals. We're not touching those. Those are already taken care of during the last renovation. What was left to us was basically the men's restroom, the women's restroom. And if you recall the existing building, you'll know that this middle section is where the guards check you in and it's where all the guard and staff areas are. What we discovered when we talked to everybody about what they wanted within this part of the building was they wanted a new restrooms, they wanted them to be modern, they wanted to be ADA accessible, but also they wanted a couple of family cabana rooms like they have over at the recreation center. For any number of reasons, a lot of it to do with access and lots of different people use those kinds of buildings, those kinds of spaces, those family restrooms. And so what we did was we looked at the capacities, showers, toilets, lavatories and that sort of thing. We looked into what the code requires that we have and we brought it up to modern standards and then we went a little bit further. So we actually found by reorganizing the spaces, we could increase the capacities of each of the men's and the women's, which was a good thing. The way they basically work is you've got a series of showers, one of them which is ADA accessible and can also work as a private changing area. We've got a series of toilets and urinal or a series of toilets in the women's and sinks. Now, the space in the middle, that's where the staff was, that's where we put the family cabanas. And we're able to get two awfully ADA accessible. In addition to that, we've put in a new janitor's closet and a new electrical computer room for the facility. Now, the way this works is you've got a hallway now connecting to the pool outside and each one of these has their own access and each one is combined into sort of a more user-friendly way to get in and out of, from the pool into locker rooms. So you might ask, "Well, what happened to the guards? Where did they go?" Well, that is the one addition that we're proposing. Up here at the top, you'll see that we've added a little bit of square footage. That is going to be a new guard office and a little bit of storage. You can see that it's pushed out from the building a little bit. Point of that, and when you see the elevations, you'll understand better, is that it's all glass on that end and by pushing it out, they can see all of the pool complex and all of the area around that. The storage behind allows them access to things like kickboards and things that people want to check out when using the pool. So we worked with the pool staff to see if this would be optimized for them or would be a workable solution since it is a different location and they're perfectly comfortable with it. So that takes care of what we're doing on the pool side of things. And I'll show you what that looks like in a minute in terms of three dimensions. Let's move to the middle section, what we call the link. Right now, that is an unused space. It's wide open, it provides a ramp and a stair access because of different elevations down to the Anderson Building, but otherwise, it's unused. So one of the things that we felt we could do is we needed to have a new checkout station or check-in checkout station since we took that space away from the middle of the building. So what we've done is we've put a reception desk in the middle of that space. We'll service that from the ceiling so we won't have to dig the floors up to get power there and data. But in addition, we've added a more robust entrance system so staff can tell who is coming and who is going. And we can have a bit of queuing in that space when it's hot outside so you can stand in the shade rather than just standing outside in the heat. But the basic idea is you'll come into the exact same door that's there now, you go through the line, check in and then move into the pool locker rooms and the pool. And then coming out, there's a clear way to exit and then out again. That's one of the things staff really wanted. They wanted more clarity as to who is coming and who is going. Other than that check-in desk, we are upgrading, we're refinishing the floor in some new paint. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to try to provide a little bit of air conditioning. Right now, there is a bit of cooling in this fitness area in the Anderson Building. We're going to tap into that and provide a little cool air coming in here. It's not going to be perfect. It's not its own system, but it'd be better than what it is now because you can imagine it's a glass box, it gets quite hot. And if we're going to have staff there all summer, we need to provide something. So that takes care of the link. Now, moving on to the Anderson Building, this is a little bit of a fun story. We've got a lot of people who use this in many different ways and it has many, many lives. As you know, it was the original Parks and Rec offices. And if you go in today, you'll see where that was. You can see that there was a check-in desk right here in the open area where admin was. And so basically, what we tried to do with this is we tried to create a little bit more usability out of the spaces that are there. So let's start with the fitness room. It's really actually fairly functional as it is. What we decided to do was redo the flooring, redo a little bit of storage, maybe remove the ceiling and redo the lighting so we can do more activities and not be so limited. But for the most part, it's a fairly functional space. All the mechanical spaces here will remain the same, we're changing the mechanical systems in this particular project. The major move we're doing is in the middle of the building, in the lobby area. If you're familiar with the building, you'll know there are two outdated restrooms right in smack middle of the building. Our proposal is to remove those restrooms and replace them with one ADA accessible restroom, which you'll see right here. And in doing so, what we'll do is we'll actually open up this lobby. Right now, if you're waiting for the next event to happen in the gym or if there's a group of people who are leaving and coming, there's nowhere for them to stand. They actually have to stand pretty much in the court because there's no space in this hallway for them. So this provides a little bit of queuing space, a little bit of waiting space, a little bit of social space, if you will, before and after different events are going on. There's also a need for some babysitting sometimes by some of the groups. It provides an area for them to do that potentially. In any case, it opens up this into a true lobby space without really sacrificing any program area. The multipurpose room is a new idea that came out of our discussions. That's the old admin area. So the idea is if we can wall that in and make a useful space out of it, we can actually do all sorts of different things, everything from program spaces to maybe using it as a babysitting space when it needs to, to overflow spaces when there's things going on at the pool, or even classrooms and things like that associated with the pool. Storage area that's here right now, we remain essentially unchanged. We're reorganizing it to make it a little more efficient, but effectively, it's a usable space, we're going to leave it alone. And then finally, the gym area, our plan for that is first of all, to stop the roof from leaking. Right now, especially after that last hailstorm, it was quite a mess. And so it's getting a new roof and we're removing those skylights. Now, the skylights in a metal building are always a challenge because a metal building flexes, flexes with the wind, it flexes with temperature. It's very difficult to get things that are rigid like skylights to do well in a moving building. And so our proposal is to not put skylights in, but as you see when we show you the elevations, we're suggesting that we put windows around the high side of the gym to get natural light in, but not in peak play. The flooring will get replaced, we'll do some restriping, but in fact, then we'll do some new lighting throughout the entire facility, I should have mentioned that. But effectively, it's going to be a large multipurpose space and a lot of the same activities that happen now will continue and potentially there'll be opportunities for more. So it's more of a finish and lighting and window upgrade in the gym itself. One of our hopes is to add some large fans that will circulate in the ceiling. The purpose of those is to mix the air a little bit better, to get airflow to happen a little more nicely in there. However, we're not upgrading or changing the main mechanical system. So we've got a couple lists in your package of exactly what we're doing with the pool, bathhouse, the link and the Anderson Building. I went through most of these. If you have any questions on those, let me know, but we thought we'll make a list for you just so it's really clear what's in and what maybe not in each of these projects. Of course, the one with the Anderson Building seems to be the longest one. The truth is, a lot of those are more finish related. So here's a picture of the Anderson Building as you would approach it. You can see the basic shape of the building is the same. We're not changing that. However, there are a few things that we can do and one of the main objectives is we're trying to get this building that really feels like three different buildings to feel more cohesive, to feel like it's the same. And so what we've done is we've worked with the planning department. We asked them if we could, for economical reasons, could we replace the metal siding that's on the Anderson Building with different metal siding? And they agreed, as long as we use one with an architectural profile, so it's a little more interesting, it would have more depth and more shade and shadow. And so that's what we're proposing. We'll have a brighter color, a more rich kind of color. You can see the windows that we're suggesting on the upper portions of it and then a strong base. Right now, if you walk around the building, you'll see that the snow falls and the snowshovels banging the sides and it's, you know, it's a tough situation. So we're going to reinforce the base of that whole building so that it holds up better over time. And one thing I will point out is that this is the parking main drop-off and parking lot area and you'll see that there's a window down left. Our thought with that is to not actually use a window, but use a garage door, a very large garage door that hopefully, one of the things we heard was that it needs to be festival friendly, whatever we do. Right now, there's an art show that happens during the Carnation Festival. If there's a way in which we can open this building up and have it be more of an indoor and outdoor experience so events can flow in and out, because right now, people go through these doors or they go through around, it's not very cohesive to doing something that's more shared within the park. So that's the idea with that kind of, with that big garage door. Otherwise, we're using paint as our friend to sort of blend all the other spaces together. We're going to upgrade some signage, new roofs all around. And we've even suggested that on some of the more blank buildings, we might do some architectural screens to give it a little bit more interest. It won't be climbable or anything like that, but it's really just to sort of make a more flattering cohesive look to the entire facility. In terms of the entryway, this is just a quick little graphic. Our intent with this is not to spend a lot of money on the front, but to provide maybe some ideas of shade and some places to sit. When we get to the pool side of things, you can see this is the guard room that I was mentioning. So it would be built, not a block, can't be blocked, just like the rest of the building, but it would be painted more of that red color to match with the other side of the building and to signal it is a place where bike cars are. And then with the pool entrances, we thought we could make that kind of fun and use the counter to identify the different areas of men's, women's and family restrooms. And use that architectural screen, maybe even look like barn doors to connect with that idea of the barn. Another photo. Now, so in a building like this, which is really a pure renovation, it's a bit of a guessing game to figure out what's inside those walls and what it'll cost. So our strategy for coming up with a number is that we know, we have a really pretty good sense of what it would cost if we built it new. We have a lot of projects that are going on now and so we have a good database of what that is. Since we're not building new and we get some, we actually have some that we're working with, we went through each of the space and that's what this detailed list is meant to represent, and we tried to decide, is this a major renovation or is this a minor renovation? If it was a major renovation, it got more costs associated with it, not the full cost, but more cost, of course, a minor. And so we did a ratioed kind of approach for every single space to come up with the overall idea of cost. The other thing is that we knew that there was going to be some inflation. And so you can see up in the upper left there, we assumed a 9% inflation to get to the midpoint of construction. Why the midpoint of construction and not the bid date? Because when contractors bid, they have to themselves project to the midpoint of construction because some of the things they will be buying until halfway through the project. And so we have to account for some of that. So our project is coming in right around $3 million and it includes the hard costs, which are all those bricks and mortar type of costs and then all the soft costs as well. You can see there's a detailed list here in terms of design fees and planning fees, testing fees, all those sorts of things. We tried to come up with a line item for everything. In addition, there's the contingencies, the unknowns, as well as the In addition, there's the contingencies, the unknowns, as well as the escalation. So it often comes up, since this has been priced separately from the park, what is going to be related to the site versus the building? And so, we've included this, just to know that a lot of things in here are actually in Paul's budget, so there's not duplication. Okay. So since this is a bit of a guessing game, as to figure out what things cost, we worked with the public and the staff to say, gosh, if we have to dial this back a little bit, and we had to take things away from the project, what are the priorities? So what's our plan, basically, if we have to do that? And so, here's a list of the top priorities. So these are the things that we must do in order. So the first, we have to do the bathhouse. Then, we need to improve that link, because that whole indoor, going in and out situation needs to be improved. Then, we work on the gym. Then, we get lighting throughout. Then, we do the exterior improvements, and that's the order with which we spend our money. Now, if, if the costs exceed the projections, what would we take away? First, we remove the windows in the gymnasium. Then, we'd rearrange the bathrooms in the Anderson Building, meaning that we would leave the ones that are here alone, we'd do that later. Third, we would not do the fitness room, we would not do the lobby, and then we would not do the admin area. So we have a logical plan, these things can all be added later if necessary. Now, if we go the other way, should we get a favorable bidding environment, what would we add? Well, we'd remodel the outdoor entrance plaza. We'd do a more robust shade structure and seating out here, shade trees and that sort of thing. Next, we'd add outdoor screening of the exterior walls of the bathhouse. What does that mean? Well, right now, this is all glass. If you look through this space, you'll see that this part of the pool area is full of pool equipment that's not being used. It's a bit of a storage area. And so, the theory is, we have a little bit extra money, we're going to actually take a little bit of space from Parks and Forestry, they've donated a little bit of area, they say they have, and we're going to put, screen it off and put it back here. That way, we can get that stuff out of the way, and it makes a little bit more usable space in around the pavilion that's back there. And then finally, we'll extend, oh, and I forgot, we'll add the screening elements I mentioned. You know, the little decorative screening elements, obviously they're not critical, but a nice touch, and that would be done if we had additional money. So schedule. We actually work from the end backward. So what are the absolutes that we have to do? That is, we have to get open, the pool and the building have to be open by Memorial Day. Has to. So we just work back from that. You'll notice that there's actually another date on here, seven one, and that's because we actually can't get all the park work done, the plantings mainly, in May. We know that we have to give a little bit more warmth to the ground, let the ground under freeze and that sort of thing, before some of the grass and some of the plantings can happen. That can happen, but we want to get it done before the festival. So July is the date for the rest of the park. But basically, working backwards, you can see, we need to start construction in September. To do that, we need to finish the drawings in July. To do that, we need to get started in February. And then, we need to have all of our planning complete by the end of the year. And that's our schedule. Do you have questions?
First of all, Paul, Sam, and Craig, I'm very impressed with the amount of planning, the suggestions, and then the possibilities, and then as well, to include the public input and give them that inspiration. I feel as though you've done a very good job. I'm sure my council does as well. Now, we must, one of us, Mom is leaving, but, oh, great idea, thank you for that. Council, we've got a very big project we're looking at, and this, as I get it, we are, while we are giving a consensus as to the preferred design, we will actually look at it at a council meeting for final approval. Next week, good. Ms. Davis?
So I had just a few questions, some about the outreach, some about some of the things that Mr. Orket brought up. I know I initially had also said something about the baseball field, because I think, I think we've always known Anderson Park to have that baseball field, and I think also growing up, being a softball player, of course, we didn't play on that field, because as you had said, Joyce, it's a baseball field, not a softball field. But, you know, we had the field at Marshall. So I would, I guess I would like a little bit more input on the use of that. But the other comment I want to ask about before we go into that is, I do appreciate the outreach that was done, but it does seem that the outreach was done through specific sources. I mean, I know you always can send stuff out and say, please come to the meeting, please come to the meeting, and then by the time a decision's made, people are like, I didn't know about the meeting. But I think like some of the pop-up outreaches, like one of the ones was during a concert. So of course, you're probably going to get more concertgoers saying, yeah, let's have more stages, and we can have several dueling bands and a great festival type of thing. So you're going to get that kind of crowd at that pop-up activity that's going to be supporting that kind of function. And same with if the pop-up was during some of the soccer practices and that type of thing. Yeah, let's, you know, boy, it would be a nice time that we'd have some area over here to warm up, and then play, you know, play our sports there. So I guess my question would be, because my hope is that we reach out to all of the users, and so like the folks that did use the kind of adult baseball field, you know, was there outreach to them, you know, a special invitation to make sure that they were going? So that's one of my questions. I think my other question is, again, I probably have a lot of old school viewpoint, because I grew up with that baseball field being there, seeing baseball being played there. But I also feel like it would be nice for all of our parks to have that diversity. You know, like for instance, Discovery Park has like a skateboard, you know, ramp, and you can ride your bikes in that area and that type of thing. So is that necessary to be at all parks? I mean Paramount Park, I drive by a lot of times, it's actually over by Mr. Orket's house, and a lot of times, that's empty. So are we utilizing that to the most we can, you know, for the soccer, you know, crowd or users? So I guess my thought is, I'd love all of our parks to meet everybody's needs, and I don't want all of our parks to start looking the same, that we have, you know, the new kids kind of play playgrounds, and that they all have bike, some kind of bike and skateboard tunnels, or whatever you call them, you know. So I guess, what are your thoughts? I know I asked you a bunch of questions, but one, mostly outreach to those people that use those baseball fields. And then, two, if those baseball fields aren't going to be there, what's our, what's an option? And then, three, do we run the risk of having a lot of our parks have the same facilities? And should we still keep that kind of diversity within our parks?
Let's see if I can answer them, I tried to make some notes. So yes, really, the specific outreach occurred in June to individuals that were identified as park users, including baseball, soccer, swim team that use the outdoor pool, and those were the focus groups, the festival organizers, kite flight organizer, Carnation Festival, jazzercise. So all these are groups, we worked very hard to recruit into these focus groups, and we had fairly good attendance. We did have the president of the Wheat Ridge Area Boys Baseball Association attend, and this is just a point of clarification, they don't use the baseball field, they use softball fields. And I know that seems counterintuitive, but softball fields give them more flexibility. So the individuals that are using the baseball field currently are the third level high school team when they need it, because the high school has a field behind Everett Middle School of baseball field. And in the senior men's league, thirty-five and over, they rent the field. So that is the main user of the field. And they do play there pretty much March through fall in the evening. And they, of course, enjoy having a lighted field, because they usually work, so they start later. So that's who's using the field. Did we reach out to them? Yes, we did. But also understanding they aren't necessarily invested in our community the same way some of the other focus group individuals were, because they don't necessarily live here. It's a metro-wide league. We do have another men's league that would like to get on the field, so there's a demand there, but there isn't enough time to have both those leagues on the field. Does that answer your question, the first question about the outreach?
Yeah, it does answer about the outreach.
Okay. And then, are we using all fields at capacity? Absolutely. So you may drive by Paramount, it's used, it is one of our main soccer fields, there's actually two fields at Paramount. They practice every day, and they play games all day on Saturday. Same for the soccer field at Anderson, and the Recreation Center field. Boys baseball and girls softball use all of the rest of our fields, and they're permitted during season nonstop. So there's always a demand. I don't think you could provide enough field space for the demand requested, because they just practice more. You know, back in the day, they'd start in the spring, now they like to start in February. So that's just the nature of the play.
And then, like the park diversity. So like, for instance, where we have, you know, like some of the bicycle, you know, like one of the recommendations, it looked cool on the pitcher. But are we, you know, and I know we have, I don't, I'm sure it's not the same as Discovery Park, because those are more of those little, you know, those types of things. But, you know, I just want to make sure that, again, that all of our parks are meeting everyone's needs. So, you know, again, and I'm just throwing this out, and everyone's probably going to be like, wait. You know, even if you put like a softball type of field still in Anderson Park, and not do the bicycle thing, because maybe we have something similar at Discovery Park, I don't know. But are we having a kind of diverse, you know, are we making sure, or is that even a goal, that you would have kind of diversity in the parks, so that everybody's needs are met?
Well, of course, we want to meet everyone's needs, and this preferred concept plan is based on the input we received from our residents that attended the focus groups, open house, and pop-up event. And though you say, yes, we went to a pop-up event during a concert, it's a great way to capture people, because it is difficult. We had fourteen people attend our community meeting last night.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I think there's some similar amenities that always attract families, and that's great play areas, like at Discovery. I have had Gil from Wheat Ridge Cyclopes approach on two different occasions for a small bike park like that, off the trail, where kids can be riding and then ride off into an area like that and do something different. That's a, that, the future, and we're calling that a future opportunity, because it isn't funded right now. It's just, it might be an ideal location for something in the future, and we want to identify it. But we don't really have anything like that at the present time. There is a high participation rate in soccer, so that's why we're seeing that demand. So do we want all our parks to look alike? Not necessarily, but we certainly want to base our improvements on what our public asked us for. And our performance, this performance stage, that shelter that they're currently performing under, and that's always a high demand, both at Prospect and Anderson, is those large picnic shelters are rented almost every day, spring, summer, and into the fall. So to replace that with a dual-function shelter and really give the park a new lift would be very, would be, you know, is, would serve a lot of people. So, did I answer all your questions? Okay.
I'm going to go with Mr. Reber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As it relates to the baseball field, was the consultant ever asked to provide a design or an estimate that would include maintaining the baseball field? Or as it relates to the focus groups, were they ever presented with a design that included the baseball field being maintained?
Well, so, was the baseball field ever an amenity that they had an option to choose? I don't remember if it was in the open house, but I will say from day one of the bond issue, now the wording in the bond issue did not specifically say that the baseball field was going to be removed, that all the information moving forward, educating the public about what the bond issue included and what projects were being suggested for Anderson Park included removing the baseball field. So we didn't move forward with options showing a baseball field to keep, because we never heard that. But I understand your question, was it an option? No, not really. And then, we're also responding to what I hear from on a daily basis, are the people that live around the park that look at the lights at night. It's a, it's a close quarters for lights and residents on the baseball field, so.
Well, I guess my answer to that would be that every resident in the neighborhood would have been, how long have the lights been there?
Oh, fifty years, probably.
Okay, so they moved in with those lights on. But as it relates to the multi-use field, what is it about that field that would preclude us from including a baseball field diamond in the corner of that multi-use field and extending the field out a little bit further, because you already have an existing soccer field in the park? And if it's going to be a multi-use field, I've seen several multi-use fields that have an amenity that includes a baseball diamond, and whether it's a removable mound or otherwise, is there a design that would include the baseball portion of it in the corner of that? Or could that be considered?
In a corner where it exists right now in the park plan?
The multi-use field that is in the preferred concept plan, if in a corner of that multi-use field, we had a baseball diamond setup?
I understand now. So that is where the existing baseball field is, and it takes up most of that area. So when you have a baseball field, it isn't as multipurpose or as flexible as other types of fields. Doesn't mean it won't fit there, and we can't leave it there. But it does require a permanent outfield fence, and it is generally blocked off from any other use besides baseball. It's, we keep it locked, and it has a mound, a pitcher's mound, it's maintained, et cetera. But it could certainly be placed there, it still fits there, but it would preclude that tabletop grassy area that would be multipurpose.
And so, the baseball field requires that outfield fence be permanent and not removable or anything?
Yes.
And I guess my main concern here is that the, this appears to be one of the only adult baseball fields in the area, and as you mentioned, there is a significant amount of draw from the regional area and the metro area to this, that are not necessarily residents, but they are coming into Wheat Ridge from the metro area to use this field, which is, I think, is one of an attractor for the economy in the area. So I would like to see us do what we can to try to work to maintain the ball field in the preferred plan, and that would be my consideration.
Okay. The only other information I'd like to provide is that the lights that are currently on the field need to be replaced. So that's about a three hundred thousand dollar budget item in terms of the probable cost for the park. So there'll be a trade-off there. I don't know exactly what that would be or how it would work, what related to the preferred concept plan and the other items in the plan at this time.
I'm going to go with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got about three questions. Starting out with the bike park, in the graph early on in the presentation, it's showing up as a number three preference coming down, but yet, in the body of this down farther, it's shown as seven percent, and those numbers don't seem to jive.
I'm going to defer to Samantha or Paul on that particular question.
So those were at two different points in the process. The first...
The first point, when it was number three, that was during the first community meeting in the open house and that was the third that they voted for. And as we got further into the design concept and started weighing the cost of some of these features, we saw that we couldn't include the bike skills in every concept due to the cost. So that's when we asked if there's additional funding, what element do you want to see? And that was where the seven, seven percent came from.
So if I understand correctly, even though I saw it in the preferred concept, it's not really under consideration at this time?
We've identified a location for it as a future opportunity to put something like that in when we have funding available, so.
Okay. The other question I had was, I'm not, you know, I know the fitness room is there, do we have any statistics on how, with the usage, how well-accepted the fitness room is there at Anderson Park? And because we have another fitness facility a little over a mile away, would that be an opportunity for diversifying use or is there a lot of traffic through the fitness area?
We have a lot of programs and classes offered in the fitness area, yes.
And then I know you've alluded to the hundred-year floodplain through the park and just as kind of a quick blind check, is that using the new hundred-year flood boundaries or the old?
Right now, we're still using the old ones because the new ones haven't been adopted and the plan cannot get, move forward until formal adoption.
So just, but we will, I assume when we get to final landscape design, we have the new hundred-year floodplain outlines accessible to our design staff?
We are hoping so and also there really aren't any major, and Paul can jump in on this, this if he, if I'm not answering it precisely, but there are no real amenities in the park that are impacted by the change in the floodplain. We're not trying to build a house, you know, in some area or, you know, that type of thing.
I know, if we went around the, you know, we went around the pavilion with it and tried to raise the pavilion so that it wasn't underwater like I see in Mississippi River Valley where the, when you see the gables out of the picnic pavilion, as the water rolls by.
I'm going to defer to Paul, he, he's the expert on the, this part of it.
Nope, nobody goes to the park when there's a flood anyway.
Right now, the areas under the current delineation are, there's a number of areas in the park that are outside the hundred-year floodplain, above the hundred-year floodplain, in the performance stage and viewing area are in one of those zones. Everything else is something that's perfectly compatible with a floodplain such as the sports fields in the picnic area and things like that. One of the things that we'd have to double-check with the flood managers on is the new playground area and we'll have to see if that would be out of the floodplain as that is defined. But typically, those uses are allowed in flood zones anyway, as long as it's not a floodway.
Okay, thank you. I was just concerned about foundations and, you know, the design part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Christie is the reigning champion of the multi-part question, but I'm going to try, try to beat her here. So my understanding is when this is done, if we accept the alternative number one, City of Wheat Ridge will have no baseball parks. So part of it, the, the question is, does our valley, does Apex have any? Two, how many softball fields will we end up with and how many soccer fields will we end up with?
See if I have that on the top of my head, I really don't, Tim. We have two softball fields at Creekside Park and a big football field, football practice field. We have two softball fields at Panorama Park and a small soccer field. We have a small softball field at Stipes Park, soccer field at Anderson, soccer field at the Recreation Center, two softball fields at Prospect that are lighted, one new football field that's going in, one softball field at Randall Park that's lighted and a small practice field. Am I forgetting any? So I'd have to tally that, maybe somebody wrote them down, they tallied those.
Are not the lights at Prospect Park going away?
They are not, but we are not lighting the new football field.
Okay.
So do you know, where is the closest rec. district baseball field?
I'm sorry?
Where is the closest rec. district baseball field that you, are you aware of it?
I am not aware of where the next, the closest field is.
The multi-use, use for soccer or ba, or softball or?
Uh, can be used for, not softball, but soccer, football, lacrosse, that's very strong, yeah.
Okay.
Events, festivals.
Okay. Is that all? Mr. Reber?
Thank you. So that baseball field can't be used for anything else right now except baseball games?
The outfield can be used for things like shooting fireworks off at the foundation festival. But yes, it's a baseball field that has a single use.
Okay, so on the bike skills area, can you show me again where that is on here? And this is just proposed, correct?
It's shown as a future opportunity because we did get some requests for it, but felt like it was great to show it that there's an area that it could fit in, in the future as funding allowed.
And what's the difference between this and what's at Discovery Park?
Discovery Park is a skateboard park that you can ride your bicycle in. This is a small, smaller scale, but a pump park. And I'm going to let Paul answer that.
It's a, it's a completely different facility than a skate park. It is mountain bike oriented, BMX bikes, and I won't get a lot of the terms right, but there's slope-side courses, there's jumps, there's these skills area where you can practice riding on these unique surfaces. And it's, there's a lot of different things that can go in this. You'd have to go into a design process where you figure out how much room you have, what ages and levels of ability you're targeting, then you decide how you approach it. But typically, there are more soft service areas than there are this type of facility. Usually you do not see paved paths in, in this, in, in the type of skills area we're talking about.
Okay, what's the estimation of cost for something like that?
Well, once again, it depends on what you.
Right, give me a range.
If it's, if it's just dirt with jumps, it's probably in thirty to fifty thousand dollar range and this, these are very, very, very soft numbers.
No problem.
If we get into this, some of these types of facilities, seventy-five to a hundred, something like that. Lot of variables. I know Highland Hills is looking at doing a small bike skills area at the new Clear Creek Valley Park and they're kind of working out an agreement with the contractor for the construction of that facility. They're getting soil donated, they're kind of working to have the design done and it'll be more of a grassroots type thing.
Okay.
That's, has its own set of challenges versus going through the design bid-bill process, but that's another route that changes the cost as well.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. And I have just one more question. On the bathrooms, it looks like there were some comments about, they felt that they were far away from the users. What are we doing to address that or are we doing anything?
We really aren't doing anything. Restroom structures are extremely expensive and that one's centrally located, inside the park, plus there's a restroom in the Anderson building as well as a bathhouse. Even those aren't open all hours. We do provide at least for the people using the buildings or up in that part of the park, restrooms. But no, we aren't doing anything to address that comment.
Are we doing anything to upgrade those at all?
No.
Nothing at all? Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Pond?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank everyone who participated in the community as well as the Parks and Rec Commission and the Master Plan Advisory Committee, everyone who came out to the focus groups. I know there's a little bit of debate about stakeholder groups, but, you know, it appears to me that this was a robust process. And that we tried to reach out as much as we can. I appreciate the design effort, both at the building area as well as the, the programmatic areas in the landscape. And I, so I, I find the, the plan to be well-thought-out with some alternates and some things that we can move into the future. Having said that, I, my comment on the, you know, I, I certainly understand the sensitivity of the baseball field. However, I think it's very hard to, to go through all of this process and look at all of the users and stakeholder groups and to end up accepting a single-use program that takes up so much square footage inside of what ultimately is, is a very limited infrastructure of park facilities, even though it's one of the, the greatest parts of our community and one that we share often, this is, we still have very limited resources as it relates to park facilities. And the size and scale of this and the fact that it's a single use makes it very difficult. Even if I was, you know, someone who's out there playing, it makes it very difficult to justify logically pushing forward that single use. Having said that, you know, I think it's pretty clear that the lights, you know, are, are not really something that, given all of the other things on the list that, that rose to the top and have been prioritized, I don't believe the lights will be able to make it through and I wouldn't suggest that they should, so that that's likely to, to be lost. It sounds like that's not, you know, the, the end of the world in terms of the facilities that we have elsewhere that do have lights and, and I assume are up to code and appropriate. I, I would, I would, you know, the only thing I would agree with, I think, is that if there is possibility of, of looking at a multi-use concept in order to pull softball field into that, into that, you know, corner, that that might be a nice, nice opportunity to, you know, to, to keep a baseball aspect in the park. But I think that the specificity of what this baseball field is in terms of this very single use that you cannot kind of work around, I think makes it very hard to, to, to argue that that's, you know, that that's the right, the right thing, especially in the face of the, of the process and the feedback from stakeholders through, through, through the, through the opportunity. And I know, you know, that there's a request to kind of open the, open the book again and, and, you know, and invite people to come in and, and talk about this again or talk specifically about the baseball. You know, and, and I, I suppose I'm not, you know, dead-set against that, but I think it's, I think that it, we run into some, some fairness issues when we, when we potentially make everyone who came, who came to these other meetings to come back again to, to participate and or to argue their point with the group that, that perhaps, you know, either participated and, and, and didn't come to consensus or perhaps didn't make it en masse to some of these mission meetings. And, and I think that's really hard and I know we deal, I know we deal with this and it's very difficult in terms of getting people's attendance and, but I think continuing to put it through a spin cycle, especially with the, the schedule and the escalation of construction costs and the, and the need to start moving through the design, I'm, I'm not sure how that can be fairly executed with, with all of the people who, who have already participated. So, you know, for me, while I understand that perhaps the, the true loss of an, of an asset, and I'm not diminishing that, I, I understand that, that this is suggesting that loss, I find that what we are gaining, or at least what the plan suggests that we can gain, both from program, amenities, renovation, I think is, it looks good to me. And, you know, I will, I will be giving my consensus towards moving this forward.
Thanks, George. I think we can, I have one question, is if we did have to look at, are we reconfiguring it and adding the baseball field or bringing it back? What would, do we have some design costs, et cetera? Delay, whatever.
We would, we would want to go back and vet a location for that and what it might look like and try to balance the needs that we heard. Yes, we would incur additional design costs and to George's point, then I guess try to determine if council would like additional public input on a new concept plan. Then include the baseball field.
So we'd have some time to look at it. Okay.
If you looked at a baseball field, there'd be no lighting with that baseball field, correct?
That would be.
Is that my understanding? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reber?
Thank you. I guess just to Mr. Pond's point about being, baseball being a single use, as it relates to the multi-use field, it indicates that this is good for all field sports, but on the whole, which sports would be played on that multi-use field?
Soccer, lacrosse, possibly football as a practice area.
And I guess as we look at the, the preferred concept plan, we have an existing soccer field that could be used for those same sports as well or is it not big enough for lacrosse and the football?
It isn't that it isn't big enough in terms of size that is a game field and what we're suggesting is a tabletop. And I'm going to let Paul answer that. It's not crowned to function as a, a formal field for any of those sports, but a large practice area, whether you're throwing a frisbee, flying a kite, anything you want to do on a Saturday. The soccer field is a game field and maybe practice on it, but this area is being proposed as a large multifunction grassy area.
I just, as it relates to the baseball field being a single use, we, as the preferred plan is presented, we have two separate fields being set aside for soccer and these other, these other sports, but it seems to me that, that that's just as much of a single use as the baseball field would be in the sense that with one existing soccer field, by adding a multi-use field in place of the ball field, we're adding ostensibly to another soccer field to that area. And it seems like you can have both activities in the same park, but when you take away the ball field, that eliminates that use completely out of the park. And so that's my main concern. And then as it relates to the bicycle skills area, when I was growing up, the bicycle skills area was along the Clear Creek, you know, along the trails, along the Clear Creek. And, and growing up, that's where all the, the jumps and the dirt tracks were along the Clear Creek itself. So that's where I learned my skills, but not that I have any skills.
Well, I will say we try to manage people away from the banks of the creek in today's world because it's pretty hard on them and it ruins them away. So we like to have a focus in a specific area.
So to that point, could those bicycle skills area be built in along the banks of the Clear Creek?
No.
No?
No, it erodes the creek banks.
Well, I'm talking about the, the wooden trail amenity type thing?
No.
Okay.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be the best thing from a conservation standpoint.
Sorry for ruining the trails again.
No, no, that's fine.
So how many of the banks did you ruin as a kid? I think I'm ready for a consensus. I, I believe everybody's had an opportunity to speak. Mr. Pond?
Yeah, I would make the consensus to, to move this plan forward as, as, as presented. I, I think with perhaps just the, the notation of, of again, looking at that tabletop complex and understanding if there's any other, any other uses like a softball field that could be pulled into that. But other than that, I would make the consensus towards approving this plan and moving it forward to the next meeting.
Do I have a consensus, please? I'll do a second, so. One more second, so. Show your hands if you want to go forward and have this thing brought at a business meeting.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I mean, it's, if you want, it's, the schedule is to bring it back Monday for approval, so is, if that's part of your consensus, I think we need more direction on what that looks like. If you want it fully designed.
Okay, perfect.
No, I, I mean, I, I think a quick estimation is to whether or not, you know, a, in a tabletop concept, because I'm accepting that and I understand that that's, it's not a crowned field and it's a practice space that can also be used for flying a kite on a Saturday, et cetera, and I appreciate that use, that's important. And that's the, the piece that to me is, is really the multi-use factor of it is, is when it gets out of the sports com, you know, complex and actually can be, you know, a frisbee area, kite area and things like that. But whether or not in a table, tabletop setting, that you could have, you know, either a backstop in a corner or a skinned infield or something like that complimentary to that, in that tabletop aspect. And if the answer is no, then, then fine. So I think all I would ask for in that case is, is just a notation and a, and a kind of summary, summary response for next Monday.
Is there, do you have, is there a feeling that that, it needs to be in the tabletop area, or if that component or amenity use could be configured somewhere else in the park, would that be acceptable?
Sure.
And just to clarify, we're talking about a softball component?
Correct.
Either or, as far as that location or another, did I understand that?
Yes. So I'll discuss with the consultants and we'll see if we can make that adjustment to bring it forward on Monday for final adoption.
I still need a consensus. No? Yes? Show of hands. Okay, so I only got two. All right.
Well, we need more discussion.
We need more discussion.
I would like to make a consensus that an alternative design that would include the baseball field either where it is, it is existing or at another location within the park, that we maintain a baseball field of appropriate regulation size within the park in some location. And that, that, that alternative design would be considered.
And, and just to clarify, probably that will be brought back on Monday, and that will change the schedule to, to make sure we're comfortable with that.
I just want to clarify that that does not include lights.
So it would add $300,000 to the cost?
The existing lights may not, cannot stay. The, they are completely worn out and they're, they're at this point cannot be repaired and the poles cannot be climbed to repair them. We need to get the poles gone out of the park.
Unless you want to pay to replace them, you can always pay to replace them, but that, they're expensive and that eats up a lot of our $4 million budget, so that's an option too.
And those were $300,000, correct?
Correct. You know, we can certainly make a notation if you have a consensus, want to make a consensus to keep the baseball field, that the lights be a future opportunity or note as funding allows, but I don't believe that's fit into the budget today.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd like to support that. I'm, I'm very impressed with this plan. I think you guys have done a fantastic job, and I really like the garage door on the, on the multi-use building, or the, you know what building I'm talking about. I can see, I can see us having a garden sale there or a fruit market there. So all that is good, but the, the one thing that gets me is the baseball field. It's, you know, there, as, as far as I can be able to determine here, we know of no other baseball fields anywhere around here that could be used directly, and I don't know, is there, is there any?
All right, let me make the statement for you. The, the response was the Apex Field in Arvada is, has a baseball field.
Well, Long Lake Ranch has a small field. I'm not sure I'm accurate on this, but he asked, what was the nearest one? And I believe it's Long Lake Ranch in Arvada at about 64th and, and basically the road that goes to Boulder. Thank you, thank you.
Highway 93.
Right up, right up by the new Jefferson County Football Stadium up there. And second of all, if this should get continued, I am aware that the, and I don't know how this works, but I am aware that-
Thank you, sir, for the information, for the, for the specific information. We usually don't take public comment during the actual study session, we take it beforehand, but I realize you were asked.
I do know that there's an organization that would work into your budget and be responsible for the servicing of the field if you wanted to know that figure.
Many years ago, we did not like allow public comment at all at, 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 not the input at the beginning. It's appreciated, thank you, but we don't, otherwise we won't get the work done that we have to do.
I apologize, I should not have invited.
It's okay.
I'm, I'm really done, I just wanted to say that. I, you know, maybe there would be more users in a different kind of field, but we have a lot of other fields. And I, we're a public entity, we should be serving the public, and there just is no other alternative, so I think I'm going to go with the baseball field.
Can you restate your consensus, please?
I would like to see an alternative design that would include a regulation baseball field with the opportunity, whether it be through undergrounding electrical now or otherwise repairing in the future, that that ball field would be lighted either through the city paying for that or otherwise, just making sure that we have that opportunity down the road that it would be lighted in the future.
And that would include any separate entity that maybe wanted to supply that?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Could we have maybe the consultants or Joyce talk about the scheduling, how long this would take, just so that everybody understands what this does? Based on the scheduling of the pool and the, and festivals, there's a lot of things we have to work around, so I just want to make sure everybody understands what this means for the schedule.
So the first thing I want to do is confirm that that does not include any additional public input? If, if you pass this consensus, you're comfortable moving forward without additional public input? Okay. So I'm going to defer to Paul about the schedule. The details of the construction schedule, if we're ready to move forward with the building and the Anderson Building and the bath pool house, you know, we, we just need to do a little bit of work on it. I think my first step is really asking Paul whether he feels comfortable changing the preferred concept plan to have it ready for the packet tomorrow, and I'm going to guess he's going to say no. So then we would come back to you as soon as possible in November. Do you want to confirm that, Paul, or?
We can change the plan to show the baseball field because the only place it's realistically going to fit is where it is right now. It, so we basically just turn off the multi-use field and turn on the baseball field. Now, we can't tell you what the cost implications of that move are and will be in, in the time we have available. But my guess is it'll end up, we would not have to do the work to restore the turf area in this area here where the infield is now. And so that we can, that we can do very quickly. As far as what it, what it impacts as far as the schedule goes, that's hard to say, we'd have to talk, we'd have to talk that over with the team. I think we have some flexibility in the schedule to do that, but we wouldn't be comfortable coming back Monday night with new information about the detailed impact of keeping the baseball field.
So it's a little bit up in the air? Yes, to when you could come back?
I would think a few weeks.
A few weeks.
You know, a few weeks to a month, opinion? As long as there's no additional public input required.
And that's really to determine cost, is that correct? That takes you-
Right, to really determine cost.
So we could bring the preferred concept plan showing the baseball field in its current location, as Paul mentioned, because it's the only place that it fits, and then continue to work on it. That's all you're adopting anyway, you're not adopting the budget for the park, but it's background information for you, so you know what the, the park budget will be moving forward, and then we would adjust that probable cost and go ahead and move forward with the contract negotiations and construction documents while we work on the probable cost at the same time, if that will work.
One thing I do want to point out is during the process, I did not make the contact, but I believe the recreation director for staff did talk to the baseball groups, and they did not want to see the field without lights. It didn't work for them if it didn't have lights, and they did not want to lose the outfield fence because it doesn't, it's no longer a competitive baseball field without an outfield fence. And there's a similar problem using a infield, if you were to just add a softball infield to the, to the multipurpose field, we had that earlier concepts, but it's the same thing, it just becomes a practice facility. And so you basically have the single-use baseball field back in the plan. Now, having said that, I suppose you could do some practices on the outfield turf area, but not realistically. It wears the area and makes it less of a competitive. If you really want a truly competitive baseball facility, which is what you have now, you really have to have it be a single use other than say a fireworks show.
I do want to say that I'm concerned about the lack of public input, and we've had so much public input, and to just turn our back on that concerns me.
All I was going to say was, as suggested by a citizen out here, that there is a private entity that may want to buy and maintain those lights, so they could also bring that to us at our next discussion that we're going to have, whether that's Monday or two weeks from now.
I'm, I'm not sure that he said that they'd pay for it, but they would give a price, this kind of-
Oh, I thought he said buy and maintain is what I wrote down, so. But anyway, it's possible if somebody wants to, they can, okay. I will say we, the recreation staff talked to the senior league baseball, and there was at one point in time, they said they weren't interested in the field if it weren't lit. Today, they weren't sure, they thought they could possibly use it without lights, so I really am not sure exactly where they stand on that or how useful the field would be without lights.
Okay, we have a consensus?
Do we do one?
Well, we don't have it complete yet.
You've got a, need the motion out there?
I have a motion for a, I have a consensus available, which was, do you want to repeat it, or you want to, you're voting?
It's an alternative design to include a regulation baseball field with opportunity to light the field in the future and then move forward without public input.
All right, and I have one, two, three, four on that? Five?
Okay. I believe that there were a couple people that didn't know to sign in. I don't know if the council would allow for a couple more people to stand up and do public comment. I don't know that they were aware they needed to sign in, so I just bring that up and ask if the-
I always like to give that decision to the council. Is this on the subject we just finished?
I'm guessing so, yes.
Counsel? There was someone else that wanted to comment? Yes, please.
Thank you, I apologize for not realizing we had to sign in.
And your full name and address, please.
My name is Raleigh Sorrentino. I live at 4175 Teller Street, I'm a fourth generation Sorrentino in Wheat Ridge here. Grew up here, went to Wheat Ridge schools, including high school, want to see you. I'm upset, and I hope some of you got a letter that I submitted with, with this process that has come to you tonight. I feel that it was a foregone conclusion before it ever started because I was informed months ago that the baseball field was going to be eliminated, and here the process has moved along with all the input and everything, and it's still on the death row. That property was purchased way back when I was a child for the purpose of baseball. There was, at one time, there were three baseball fields there, and now there's only the one, the one that's there is used by several organizations, or at least it has been. It's been used by the men's senior baseball league, the men's adult baseball league, there used to be a Stan Musial league, I think it's now called the Rocky Mountain Baseball League, but I don't, I'm not sure which ones are using it, the staff knows who rents it. There is the Wheat Ridge Baseball Association that would like to have an opportunity to use it, but they haven't been because I've been told by the president that it's just not available. It's my understanding that field is used almost every night in the summertime, and they play it, the men's, they, they play baseball at night after work and it goes into nine, 10 o'clock at night. Those teams that use that field pay, and I understand that should offset, or I'm of the opinion it should offset some of the cost of, of the expense of electricity and the lights, et cetera. The other thing is, for what it's worth, I'm an engineer and I build a lot of projects in this country, including softball complexes with lights, and I would offer my, I'm retired, but I'd offer my services to help with anything that would contribute to the preservation of that baseball field. That baseball field is, is a beacon for Wheat Ridge. It's the only lighted baseball field in the city of Wheat Ridge. Teams and people from all over Denver come to play there in the summertime. I think there's a lot more I could say about this, and I would like to have an opportunity to do it sometime, but I'm just speaking offhand right now, I don't have anything prepared. I can appreciate this process, but again, it's, it's like so many things I've seen in Wheat Ridge, there's this process that has taken place, that has started, and in my opinion, maybe it's one man's opinion, it's a foregone conclusion, and we got the, now that it's come to culmination and coming to you guys, it's more, in my opinion, it's the tail wagging the dog. I think the people of this Wheat Ridge need to have a better opportunity for input on this. I don't know, I'm not accusing the, the input that you have of being restricted, but I also have talked to some baseball people that didn't know a thing about it. I got a red light here, does that mean I'm supposed to quit? Okay, well, anyway, I thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak. There is one other person here that came to speak to the same subject, I'm sure he would be a lot shorter than me, if you want to give him a minute or so.
Thank you, Ms. Chorantino. Counsel, do you want to hear another speaker? Come forward.
My name is Steve Zananti. I am not shorter than Raleigh. I've lived in this community since I was born, actually. Played baseball here, but now I watch baseball here, and I watch it with my son and my granddaughter, and when I can get my grandson over the hill- get my grandson over the hill, I watch it with him. We watch it right over here, always have, since DC Auto used to run the Legion team. I was surprised to hear that we have such a diverse and multiplex system, and we're leaving out baseball, it disturbed me a little bit. I would enjoy spending a summer evening watching baseball down there, and continue to do that. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, I think we can then move on to item number three.
Next race. Ken Johnstone will come up for the side.
This is on the waiver of limitation on hours of construction activity.
That is correct. Madam Mayor? Sorry, scheme situated? Yes, so this is a staff-initiated agenda item related to the hours of construction on private property, so generally associated with building permits. Actually, it's only been fairly recently, 2015, that City Council adopted an ordinance that restricted hours of construction on private property, that was 2015 ordinance, and prior to that, any kind of construction activity limitations were really just subject to the noise ordinances and kind of public nuisance regulations, but in 2015, City Council, after a couple different discussions, decided to limit noise for private construction activity, really as a way to get, you know, to maintain neighborhood peace and welfare, limited the noise, the dust, the vibration that might be associated with those construction activities. The ordinance, so limits construction activities between the hours of, or restricts construction activities between the hours of 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, and it's worth noting that the city had previously already limited the hours of construction on public rights away, so in the streets, we've long had restrictions that are very similar to that, so it was not without precedent. The limitations on the hours of construction in public rights away also came along with an ability for the Public Works Director to entertain requests for extensions to those hours. As council, I think, is probably well aware, a lot of major roadway work occurs off-hours to minimize the inconvenience to the traveling public, and so that's been a very practical matter, that some of that right-of-way work just naturally wants to occur at off-hours, or would have too much of a detrimental effect to the use of the roadways. Some similar issues have come up with recent discussions on projects that occurred recently, and then also some projects that are in the works, where we're talking with the contractors about those projects. More specifically, we had the Ashland Reservoir project, that was approved through somewhat a unique process in that it went through a special use permit process, and during that process, because of the contractor's really necessity of having extensive concrete pores, and those having to be, for structural reasons, continuous pores to maintain the structural integrity, there's a slew of other reasons why, at times, particularly that the concrete pores, long concrete pores, logically need to occur at off-hours from time to time. So that special use permit for Ashland Reservoir gave that authorization to perform that work really overnight, over an extended number of hours. Another recent example that came to our attention more recently, and this is a project that has not occurred yet, it's a large commercial building on the west side of town that has been approved, and it's just in the building permit review process, but the contractor indicated that it's going to be a very large slab foundation, and because of that, they will, and for a variety of reasons, related to, you know, taking down an entire concrete batch plant, minimizing impacts of having, you know, continuous flow of concrete trucks on the public streets, and other, you know, safety reasons really for operating those trucks during the daytime hours, they came to us with a conceptual kind of request that they would really like to have an ability to ask to operate on some off-hours. Exactly what those look like, we don't, as of yet, know. So what that really, I think, just brought to us was the question of whether there should be any ability in the code for a private contractor to ask for, you know, obviously very legitimate reasons, whether they could ask to operate outside of those 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM hours. We think, based on those examples, and I'm sure there's many others that we might, that we might be able to anticipate, that it would be worthwhile to talk with council about whether we could amend the code to create a process whereby, if we come under my position's purview, the Community Development Director's position, whether council would be willing to entertain some sort of a process that currently just doesn't exist at all, for a contractor to ask for some limited exceptions based on, you know, a good reason for relief or partial relief from those hours, while at the same time, of course, balancing the need to maintain neighborhood peace and quiet as the default position. So we've taken the liberty of drafting what we think could be some workable language that opens that window slightly, and provides that there would be a written process for someone to do that, and provide, you know, just cause for why they think they need to do that. So that's what we're bringing forward to you tonight, is just a request for direction as to whether you think that ordinance, or something similar to that concept, is something that you'd like to consider.
The request is for certain limited waivers to the general limitation. Counsel, have you got a comment or questions? I'm going to go with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Ken. Having been a construction guy, highway heavy, this is something that's near and dear in my heart, because we have had multiple, even years ago, incidences where we're required to work at night on some instances, but local ordinances prohibited us, meaning that between that rock and hard spot, as we bid the word from the governing, be it the county or whoever. So I know we're taking care of that with working right-of-way, that they can work at night. I would like to make you aware of the fact that that is a very real issue. I'm not sure, in reading this, if you've considered, number one, fuel trucks. We've had people complain about fuel trucks visiting a site, for instance, if you have a scraper fleet or something, and having a construction activity at night, you may want to consider a waiver on that, because, you know, if you want to get the project done, they work during the day, and usually go often from 5:00 to 5:00, but unless the contractor wants to buy six different fuel trucks, we can go out and visit six different sites between 5:00 and 7:00, he has, most fuel operations take place all night long, or at least until the guy finishes.
And I'm not sure I'm fully understanding, Mr. Matthews, but fuel trucks that would fuel pumps at a construction site?
Well, equipment.
Yeah.
I mean, the equipment's working during the day.
Right.
Typically, the oiler comes on at, you know, at 5:00 in the afternoon, or he might leave the yard at 4:00, depending on how far he has to travel, but he gets there after working hours, and they do oil changes, and fueling, and, you know, it's a diesel truck, and it's a construction activity.
Right.
And, you know, sometimes if it's an oil change, he will start the engine on a scraper or something, in order to make sure there's no leaks at the filter, and that everything's okay. So I wish, you know, if that's not, I haven't really decided that's really determined here, but that's certainly a need. The other thing we have to face as a reality is, as our highways and byways clog up, excavation projects that require truck explorer input are going to be taking place more and more often at night, because that's really the time a tractor trailer can get down the road, and, I mean, how do you get down Wasworth Community? Takes you three hours to get from one signal light to the next.
Right.
So, especially for our larger areas, you know, Clear Creek and G Line, we need to be able to be in a position to give them some relief for projects of that nature.
Right. And that's one of the issues, I think, with concrete as well, to the extent that, you know, you're exposing that concrete to being in a truck longer than it wants to be.
In this case, you know, you've already got 20 trucks on the road, you just can't afford to have a ruler, and a water truck, and a blade, and everybody sitting there while you're waiting for people to get through traffic, you know, from 9:00 to 11:00, and you can't get through, and from 3:00 to 5:00, you can't get through, so a lot of times, those projects are moving into nighttime operation.
So you would like to consider that in the waiver process?
I'd like to make sure that it is included.
I think it would be implicit in that, yeah, in fact it is, yeah, under section B.
It's already is?
Yes.
All right, good. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess, in reading through the language in section 5-46, number one seems to somewhat conflict with number three, in that number one says, "Construction activities required to address an immediate threat to the health, safety, or welfare of any person," but then number three says, "You must submit a written request for a temporary waiver no less than 14 days before the first day of the proposed construction activity." So if there's an immediate threat to public health and safety, how do you know that 14 days ahead of time?
So you're correct, those are different concepts. So the "construction activities required to address an immediate threat to the health, safety, or welfare of any person" is already in the code, it's actually not in chapter 5, it's only in chapter 16, but that would be something like, the, you know, a car ran into a building, the building had to be stabilized after hours to get a contractor in there so it didn't fall down, or something related to a fire incident like that as well. So that doesn't require any permitting or review by me or anyone else, it's just, we're invoking this clause, because there's a threat to someone's, the safety of an individual because of damage to a building that occurred. So that exists, and we're proposing that it continue to exist, and we're proposing to add it to chapter 5, which is the chapter that regulates buildings.
And I guess, as it relates to this list here, where it says "health, safety, or welfare," well, welfare is defined as the health, happiness, or fortunes of a person, so any construction activity is a threat to someone's fortune.
[laughing]
So I don't know how that ties in there, or when you use the word "welfare," it somewhat is open-ended in the sense that any construction activity is a threat to that, so.
Yeah, I think duly noted, thanks for providing that definition, that's helpful. I think the focus in that section would be the immediate threat, right, so it's imminent, so imminent financial collapse, I think, would have to be the threshold there. Okay.
Ms. Davis?
I just have one question as far as, you know, I do support the idea of this and the need, I guess my question would be, would there be any type of public outreach if it's adjacent to, say, you know, homes and that type, so would there be, even though you might be granting a waiver, I don't see anything in here, and I'm out of juice, but Tim's sharing, but I don't see anything in the waiver that would say there would be some kind of public notification or outreach.
And we're not proposing that in this draft, you know, building permits are generally administered administratively, there's no public noticing period associated with that process. Not to say we couldn't with this, I think there is language in there that makes it very clear that in reviewing such a request, the intent is that you balance what might be the impacts, and in fact, can place conditions on whatever waiver you might be considering that would, at least in the mind of the Community Development Director, balance what those impacts are, so, you know, that would really be a case-by-case basis. I think one of the arguments for some of the after-hours work for something like an Ashland reservoir is, it's kind of like, I don't know if this is a good analogy or not, but it's kind of like ripping off a band-aid, right? I mean, better to have something like that occur just once in an intense fashion than be dragged out over a longer period of time. But there's not, to answer your question, a public notification process that's anticipated in this draft.
So I guess, I mean, you used the example of Ashland Reservoir, and I think that they did that properly, though, because they did kind of let the neighbors know that, like, hey, this is how it's going to be for a minute, or, you know, for five weeks, and bear with us, and, you know, this is temporary, so I just, I guess I would encourage some kind of, you know, communication, at least, maybe not even asking for permission, but at least the opportunity for folks to know that it is kind of like, we're ripping this band-aid off quick, and we're doing our best to make it not affect your health, welfare, and all of those other developers.
Okay. And Ashland, just for clarification, I mean, part of the reason that, I think Denver Water might have done this anyways, because I think that's maybe their kind of company policy, if you will, but that went through a special use permit process?
Yeah.
So they required, there was public notification that was required by that, but to their credit, they then continued that public notification throughout the project.
I think it's very neighborly, and it creates good mojo between the community and the developer.
Especially since we've had complaints along those lines. Before I, is there my other sit-witchers to speak?
Thank you. As it relates to the question of notifying the neighbors, I can see some instances of when notifying the neighbors is almost going to alert them to listen for those disturbances versus, you know, if the construction is occurring indoors, or, I guess, my thought is to leave that to the discretion of the director, to say, yes, we want you to notify the neighbors in this instance, or no, in this instance, because of the nature of the construction activities, notifying the neighbors isn't required, or some sort of level of discretion there, so that if you're required to notify neighbors in every instance, then it's almost like creating an instance where you're asking for trouble in some ways, but so that's one issue. And then the other issue was, as it relates to indoor construction activities, I saw some changes in here to that, is that the case, or, on item C, it's striking out specifically, excluding construction activities that do not otherwise violate this section, so how does this apply to the construction activities that are occurring indoors, or?
Yeah, the intent has been and continues to be that construction activities that are occurring indoors and are otherwise rising to the level of violating the city's noise ordinances, those are okay, so if you're, you know, drywalling until midnight, more power to you.
Mr. Ren? I think it's a good idea, and I'm okay with notifying your neighbors, because even if they hear the noise, they're at least going to know, oh, I already got a notice, I know what this is about, not a big issue. So I don't really think it's going to be a big concern out there, I think they're just, you know, going to be grateful that we made them aware of what's going on, and that'll be it, so, thank you.
Are we ready for the consensus? Are you suggesting?
Madam Mayor? I would like to recommend a consensus on this, with perhaps adding a little bit of language about notifying affected communities, if, again, if the director feels there's going to be an impact to that community, that they be at least notified.
So many feet, or?
I hate to give you the feet part, because, then all of a sudden, it's the retail store across the way, and that's it.
I had a related question to that, if neighbors are notified, and it becomes somewhat of a nuisance, or there's an issue with this waiver being issued, is there a revocation process?
Yeah, as drafted, there would be a revocation process that's at the sole discretion of the Community Development Director.
So that would be taking into consideration neighbors' concerns, or?
It certainly could.
Good, started it. Consensus, good. Okay, move on to item four. Sign code regulations.
We'd like to end the meeting with the sexy, fun stuff.
Well, I tell you, we've got some good stuff here. First part was fun, but.
Yes, so I'll be brief and turn it over to Zach Wallace-Mendez, my, one of the planners in community development, who's been taking the lead on this, along with our city attorney. We've been firmly directed by our city attorney to bring our sign ordinance into compliance with a Supreme Court case called Reed versus Gilbert, Gilbert being a town outside of Phoenix, Arizona, Reed being a small church that sued the city back in, I'm not sure when, but the Supreme Court ruled on it in 2016? 2015, so we are apparently behind in catching up with this, so the- So the, I'll let Zach get into the weeds on this, but essentially the focus of the US Supreme Court decision on this matter was that sign codes need to be, or the practical effect of it, sign codes need to be content neutral. So that's a lot of what we'll be talking about tonight and how we can amend our code to do that and we'll get into exactly what that means. Along the way, we decided that there were probably a few other modernization things that we should, were worthy of taking a look at as well in our sign code that hasn't been amended in many years, if not decades. So we're doing just a little bit of that. We didn't want to dive too deep. The deeper you dive into the substance of that, you know, the more you really want to have some sort of a public process. We don't think that any of the topics that we're going to be covering with you tonight are rising to that level of needing some sort of an extensive public outreach process on the sign code. They really, in our minds, are kind of just modernizing it to react to changes that have occurred in the industry over the years. So we have, in your staff memo, you both have kind of an outline of what all the changes are for Reed v. Gilbert, modifications that are necessary. And then there's just kind of a small list of maybe a half dozen other topical discussions that are really going to be the focus of tonight's meeting. So Zach has a PowerPoint presentation for you that'll really go through those substantive issues and maybe a little different approach than we typically use where we, you know, throw a bunch of information at you and then ask you to discuss. We're going to ask you to discuss along the way. So to give us direction on each of these topical discussion points along the way after staff outlines the, kind of the technical nature of the issue. We thought that would be a more effective way to kind of knock off all these different topics along the way on this particular agenda item. So I will turn it over to Zach.
Alrighty. So Ken did a pretty good job of going over the background. So we'll just skip over that and jump right into just a brief overview of the Reed versus Gilbert updates. As required by the Supreme Court case decision, we removed all of our content-based sign categories and any content-based language throughout the code. This created a bit of a void and certain sign categories were removed completely, such as political signs, real estate signs. So we created several new content-neutral sign categories. So there's like a new yard sign category that covers political signs, it was meant to cover the political signs and real estate signs, things like that. We also, while we have the sign code open essentially, changed the tables. There's like several pages of tables for each, for like residential zone districts and then the commercial zone districts. They were very repetitive, hard to get through and a lot of the content was in several different places throughout the code. So we rejoined the scattered contents of several different sign categories and put them in a text format so they can just kind of pull out all the information for free standing signs, for example, or yard signs. And we think that'd be easier in our dealings with citizens and business owners to give them exactly the information that they need. We also reclassified some sign categories. For clarification, their development standards didn't change, but we just changed the names. So projecting sign was often confused with a wall sign in many cases, like channel letters that projected off the wall. So we decided to change that to a blade sign. And then informational signs were reclassified as directional signs due to much of the content-based regulations being removed from that category. We felt that directional signs is a better identifier for that category. So now we'll move into some of the items that council asked us to look into at our May first study session, so many months ago. The first one is temporary signs. Our current regulations, the temporary signs kind of difficult to enforce for our code enforcement folks. There's often no time maximums or maximum numbers. So there's somewhat of a proliferation in many places of these signs. So an easy fix staff recommends would be to limit the number of temporary signs to one per business. So in this example here, the mobile carrier has signs for each one of their, you know, the brands that they carry in their store. If council likes the approach of just having one per business, they would essentially be limited to just the one for their business. Another example that I found while I was out and about is this multi-use building here. Has apartments and also retail. So the sign is advertising for the retail space. Says something about brunch display on an A-frame sign, totally permissible. The apartments, however, have two signs here so they would need to choose, you know, under our proposed sign code, whether they want to keep the flutter flag or their little yard sign here. They could switch back and forth every day between the sign and the flutter flag, but only one at a time. So I will turn it over to you at this point if you're supportive of this approach and what the thoughts on that is out there.
Council, you're doing a different approach if you, as Ken said right from the get-go, is that as we go along, we will make the decisions so that at the end we don't struggle through it all. So the first decision is, in regard to temporary signs, and the question is, is council supportive of this approach? Did you want to explain what that means? Meaning only one temporary sign to be displayed at a time?
Correct, yeah.
I'm going to go with me-
I have a question, I guess.
Question?
So is this signs that are not attached to the building as temporary? Or is it signs that are being sort of stuck into the, like in this instance, they're out in the public right-of-way, so to speak, or in the, on the properties, but not necessarily in a window or otherwise affixed to the property itself and maybe temporary in nature?
Yeah, so we would define temporary as they are defined in the proposed section seven-eleven of the sign code. So any of balloons or inflatables, banners, pennant streamers, portable signs, which includes the A-frame signs, and then the yard, small and large categories, those all fall under the temporary signs category.
So yes, it would be one of all of the above, right? And these signs should not be located in the public right-of-way? So we're assuming these are on private property though?
That's what I was trying to get on the-
Right, yeah.
You talked about only one of the above, or would be permissible?
For the apartment, so the apartment has this flutter flag and I guess it's harder to see on this.
No, I see that, but does that mean that, for example, if during the political year, somebody had five signs up for various candidates, you thought it would be against this?
So that is actually something that we're going to bring to you later in this presentation would be exactly for that, a seasonal allowance for residents to have more than one yard sign. So this is mainly in regards to commercial temporary signs. There's different allowances for residential temporary signs, which includes the small yard signs.
Okay, and so if a Realtor had more than one sign, he had a for-sale sign and, yeah, something, some other kind of sign, that would be against this?
Temporary signs, remember.
Well, that would be temporary if he was having an open house and he had a-
Right, so that would be limited to one under this proposal.
I need, go ahead.
Just one other comment about these little flutter flags, because you see them all over. And I don't really see anything in the language that says something to the effect of, like, well-kept. Because sometimes they start looking pretty ratty. And I would like the city to be able to be like, uh, take your ratty flag down or, you know, replace it or something. Because they do get all faded and ratty. So I would just almost like to include some language to that effect if it's something the council wants to do.
So in addition, either now or down the road a piece. But at this point, the council needs to ask, are you supportive of allowing only one temporary sign at a time?
I have another question. Would this apply to city of Wheat Ridge government property as well?
In what regard?
In that only one sign would be allowed? For the city?
For the, I'm talking about the temporary signs, yeah. So there may be instances where the city of Wheat Ridge is, has more than one temporary sign out. Question whether or not that would be permissible under this or whether this is only regaling the business.
As a separate matter, we've contemplated that on public properties that the city is authorized to grant kind of policies as to how they administer temporary signage for things like special events.
So like the election right now has a flutter flag out next to the ballot box. And so that would be the one sign for this property of this city government? Or would it be for all city government? So for instance, if there's one business with one sign, is it just for that one location for that business? Or is it, how do we sort of differentiate?
Yeah, we may need to look at that a little bit because the exception that we've carved out for kind of public events at places like Anderson Park is to give that, the parks director, the ability to kind of carve out a policy as to what is permissible. But we probably need to think about that a little more as it applies to city hall. So I think we'll, if we could get back to you on that one, I think that'd be helpful. Just the-
Did you want to add, Zach?
I just, I think the intent was one per property. So if Starbucks owns five properties, they're not limited to one temporary sign for all the properties. I guess similar to city hall, I would imagine. But yeah, I guess we need to flush that out and make sure that's clear.
My feeling is that this is in the right direction, which is limiting the proliferation of these signs, especially on individual properties. However, I think as, I'm seeing it here at least, I think perhaps as we've already sort of discussed, there may need to be a little bit more. Yeah, a little bit more because maybe there needs to be some exceptions or discretion that allows. I think the open house is a great example, by the way, because many of those signs have to be put up for wayfinding.
Open house for real estate?
Yeah, because it's a wayfinding issue, right? I mean, you're trying to, you're literally trying to make sure people are kind of navigating and of course those are dispersed over, you know, several properties. However, they represent one business entity, perhaps if that's the way you're looking at it. So somehow I think that has to be considered, you know, and figured out. And perhaps, you know, but again, I think the, I agree with the intent, which is trying to create a limitation, a reasonable limitation such that, you know, that we're not getting, you know, crazy installation of temporary signs that become ragged and, you know, are really kind of unsight, exactly. So this is going in the right direction. However, I think maybe we have to step back and just think about it a little bit more to make sure that we can actually understand how it would be implemented fairly across several different business types and definitions of business and property.
As an example, real estate signs, one, maybe too few, but maybe we have to figure out some more flexibility.
So this is a great example of the challenge of being content neutral, right?
Yeah.
So we can't carve out a special exception for open house signs, right? Most of those, because then you have to read the content to be able to identify whether it's allowed that special exception, right? And that's frankly a challenge that we don't love, right? We'd like to be more flexible on certain things, but to some extent you can't and achieve that balance of not just opening the floodgates because we can't look at content versus comply with the Supreme Court rule in Reed v. Gilbert. So I hear you, but just understand that if we want to have some of that flexibility, you have to grant it to everyone, right? Because we can't look at content, right? So the fact that it says "open house" doesn't make it special. It just means if you're going to say you get three because that's what we think you need to have flexibility, we just have to say you get three.
You get three flutter flags.
You get three, whatever you want. Yep, we can't read the content.
Things, if we could be neutral to appointing, you may be like, Chris, give me a break. But even that we say that if they have multiple, it could only be for like two hours or, you know, so for a limited time, so let's pretend. Then that's kind of neutral because somebody only has an open house for like two or three hours. And then like if Starbucks is having their grand opening, they might have a big sign that says "grand opening", but they might have a flutter flag that also says "coffee" or, you know, something. So at least it would be like only for, you know, two hours or something. May you, I don't know, this is just me thinking out loud. May you have up to three signs or, you know, something, I don't know.
And some of these become challenging relative to enforcement. I mean, we're, I think our code enforcement officers have felt so challenged by this that they don't really enforce our temporary sign codes, right? They look the other way. So we're trying to create an environment that's really bright line for them. They like to be able to point to one thing in the code when they go to someone and says, "You can or can't have that." And that's kind of the simplicity that we're trying to achieve. I hear what you're saying, but that's, and we'll get to some of the exceptions on political signs as Zach alluded to, which we think we have a creative way to address that for certain times of year. I guess in the instance where you have a business owner who is looking to, or a property owner looking to lease their space while at the same time they're trying to advertise their existing business, those would be two separate business interests representing the same either property or business owner that they would be for separate purposes in the sense that the real estate agent is the owner of the leasing sign, so to speak, or maybe it's the property owner, who knows? But even then, as it relates to, you could have a UPS store with fifty different businesses with a mailbox in there and then you've got fifty different business owners that each have their own little sign up. So how do you differentiate property owner from business owner and then from a real estate sign versus a commercial sign for that business?
So we do address it to the extent that we have a new requirement that requires that to get a sign or to have a sign, you need to be, either have a property interest or a lease interest. So in the case of a UPS store, I think that would be the primary tenant. They'd be allowed to win of whatever, whether it be permanent signs or temporary signs.
But if you're listing a mailbox there, and I'm not talking about the UPS store as sort of a broad example, but in the instance where you have a place that has fifty different businesses in there and they each have a lease agreement with the landowner.
A lease for a mailbox?
Mail, for purchase stamp size square in the office, who knows?
I don't think we would consider that to be a valid lease for the purposes of a sign, right? And your other example, again, it truly is challenging. So, you know, if you have multiple things, like a real estate lease versus, I forget the other example that you have, but two parties desirous of having a temporary sign. I think the way you described that, you'd have to read the content of those signs to be able to distinguish between the two or allow both. And that's the challenge, you can't read the content. You can't have a sign code that requires you to read the sign, the content of the sign to determine whether or not it's allowed. Real estate signs are a great example, right? Currently, someone comes in and says, "I want to put a real estate sign on my property to advertise the property for sale." We say, "Awesome, let's go to the real estate code sign section of our ordinance." That's no longer exists, right? We can't look at the content. So it reduces our ability to be flexible unless you just want to kind of open the floodgates and say, "You can have three signs in every property that are temporary" so that we don't have to limit the ability to have those four different classes of signs that people want.
And is it temporary to a fixed geographic location on that property? Or is it just temporary to that property?
To the property.
So if I have a temporary sign on one corner of the property and I move it to the other corner of the property, that makes no difference? It's temporary?
Yeah, remember they said they could swap out all of them? I think you had a question? No question, you just wanted to raise your hand? You wanted to come through on some kind of a, this kind of a support or this? We're still on the first one.
It's okay.
Sounded like we had-
Yes, I wanted to go with what we were recommending because I don't think we can police it if we try to navigate and change it for one person to another business or anything else, so. Can I get a consensus?
I think there was, you wanted to add something to that, didn't you?
Oh, the ratty signs, right. Oh, the ratty signs, right.
I think we can do that as a general matter of, of adding some sign maintenance language.
Let's be sure we regulate how often a wig on a mannequin in front of a cat sign.
Uh, you're raising a hand for the consensus? Okay, please raise your hand if you agree, how you support or this, or you're hard to temporary signs. We've got three of you, right? Only three? Then I will break the table and say I agree.
This is just, just for the audience, too. It's just consensus, this will have to come back in an ordinance form on first reading and, and public hearing.
Uh, in regard to temporary signs, Mr. Fitzgerald just mentioned, um, it was noted that we should talk about sign spinners. Um, so we don't have a recommendation, we would just like a discussion about which way council would like us to go with this. Um, it might be helpful, uh, Mr. Barlow, he's, um, much more versed in this than me. So essentially, I mean, we can regulate essentially time, place, and manner. So I think, um, there is a way in which we could regulate them in time, place, and manner, or perhaps a way to prohibit them if that's the way council, um, you know, desires to go. I don't know if Jerry wants to add with the other board.
I can add to that. I've, I've written a, or rewritten a whole bunch of sign codes for different cities around the state since, um, the Reed decision, and this always comes up, and what about it? Uh, to begin with, it's a commercial sign, uh, and commercial speeches has, has a little less protection. Uh, what, uh, typically cities see is that, you know, they're going to see this along a major commercial, uh, you know, roadway. You're, you're not going to see it on a residential street because there just isn't a volume. Uh, and so what a number of cities have done is to, is to classify them as signs carried by persons. Don't have to read the sign to know that, that's, that's a sign type. And we've been talking earlier, you know, the way you get around Reed, really, or the way you comply, is to talk about sign types rather than what they say. And after you kind of get into the zen of sign types, wall sign, monument sign, pole sign, blade sign, projecting sign, roof sign, signs carried by persons, none of which require you to read the sign, that gives you a lot of tools, you know, so, so to be able to regulate time, place, and manner without looking at it. So signs carried by persons, uh, what cities have done is before they are permitting them, are permitting them in, uh, commercial districts because it makes sense. That's where those businesses are, that's where the commercial traffic is, that those people are wanting to access. Uh, you can impose time, place, and manner restrictions. So you can say, "Commercial districts, but within these hours." Signs carried by persons, "Commercial districts within these hours." And also manner, not to interfere with if the movement of pedestrians, for example, or not to, uh, um, interfere with movement of traffic or, or constitute unreasonable or, uh, safety hazard for, uh, for, uh, the movement of traffic. So if you want to get into that, you can. You can similarly say, "Signs carried by persons, uh, no." And as a sign category, say that's not permitted. Um, we do see them quite a bit. There are businesses that appear to rely on them, and I'm, I'm, uh, sensitive to that. I think, you know, clearly this sign program for every business is hugely important to it. I, I learned that early on in my practice, the sign, it, it makes it, it's hugely important to your business. They place a lot of value on, on their advertising program and their sign as a part of it. Uh, so I think the decision point for the council is, uh, if, if you're at all inclined to, to allow a category for sign spinners, then you, you take the next, if you, if you're not inclined to, then prohibition and you're done with the discussion, it makes it easy. If you're inclined to go there, then I think there's some reasonable restrictions that you can directly put into a graph that you'll see around, uh, commercial districts, non-interference for traffic pedestrians. And that's how I would do it if, if you were inclined to say, "That's a category sign that we ought to allow for business owners." That's, that's what you can do.
Uh, he's been wanting to say something, so I'm going to let him.
First, for sign spinners, I would prefer to see them under the category of public nuisance with a value of zero.
Would that be a no?
So as far as the allowance, you're, you're already got your money made up.
Yeah, I think it's also important to note that there's kind of geographically two distinctions. I think most sign spinners that I, I feel like I see are in the public right of way. Uh, and so there's kind of a, I think, a, a two-step process maybe. I think they, as they work, I think they want to be in the public right of way, if that's how they, they, they use them. Um, so that's one question. If, if you're inclined to prohibit them, not suggesting you are, uh, you could prohibit them in the public right of way, certainly. Um, and then you could also go further and, and prohibit them more generally anywhere.
True.
Mr. E. My question is, how do we enforce that if we're putting those limits on there? I mean, how are, yeah, how is code really going to enforce that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it's amongst competing priorities for our code enforcement officers. Um, you know, we'd have to work with, with that unit of the Police Department, who's sitting behind me, um, as to how, how high of a priority it is. Again, I think one of our goals with this, as it pertains to temporary signs in particular, but in general, is making this, these kind of bright lines, discreet, uh, issues in the sign code so that if you do want to enforce them, it's pretty easy, right? It's like you are a person carrying a sign, uh, that's a sign spinner in our ordinance, and we don't allow. Um, so it's an easy citation, if you will, at least it seems.
Uh, I'm going to have to defer, and I believe Mr. Fitzgerald had his little pop first.
I just want to say as a gen, as a generality here that I do not want to regulate sign spinners. They can entertain, and when you're sitting in a red light, there's nothing else to do.
Mr. E.
Um, I don't know about you, but I've never seen a rich man spin a sign. And the purpose of spinning a sign is to generate business for whatever interest they are advertising on their sign. And, um, by limiting, uh, limiting these activities, um, as unsightly as some may be, I think that we're sort of by our nose and spider face. It's that, uh, these activities are generating, uh, economic vitality within the city, and, uh, they're not doing it, uh, for their exercise, although it is a very vigorous exercise in and of itself. But the purpose, uh, behind it is to generate, uh, economic vitality in the city. So I, I would be opposed to, um, regulating, uh, sign spinners and, uh, in, inasmuch as, I, I think that as it relates to issuing a citation, are we going to issue the citation to the sign spinner or to the owner of the sign?
I think we'd have to, we'd have to discuss that further based on whatever direction we get from council.
Because that would be my main concern, is that you have a, a person out there spinning a sign and they're getting, uh, hit with a citation when the, uh, the commercial interest on the sign can just pass that sign on to somebody else until they get a citation. And so, and then, and this doesn't say anything about, uh, um, non-commercial, uh, signs as well that people may be holding in the public right of way as well. Um, but as it relates specifically to commercial signs, I think we need to be conscious of the fact that they're doing this, uh, to generate, uh, um, our economy, and that's, uh, an important consideration.
Let's go back to you, since you're, no one else has got your handle.
Just as a point of clarification, would this, uh, when you, when you call as signs carried by persons, would that include the old-fashioned sandwich board?
Yes. Yeah, I don't see too many of them, but yes, yeah. I think to, to give us direction and move you to item number three, uh, not to cut off your discussion, but, but, uh, it seems to me if, you, you need to, maybe the first consensus is, will there be any regulator, will, will sign spinning be prohibited? Because if it's prohibited or allowed, and then, then decide kind of how. But if it's going to be prohibited, we, that, that's kind of the.
Kind of the end of the discussion, right.
So, and I don't care how you vote, but, but that might be how you move the, you know, law.
Anybody else want to comment on it or make a, um, a comment as to how you would like to, to proceed as far as whether to prohibit or allow sign spinners or signs carried by persons?
Okay, so are we going to prohibit sign spinners?
Well, that's what I.
The consensus, please. To prohibit?
Mr. E.
I have, I have, that's why I was asking a little bit, because that's very specific. And, and so are we going to call sign spinners one thing, persons carrying a sign another?
If someone's just standing here with a sign that says sale today, I mean, I was being a little bit facetious
with my opening remarks, but I'm not sure I want to go all that far because.
Well, it's still a sign carried by a person. Now, you could try to say a sign carried by a person in motion or not. Then we get back to the issue that is going to keep coming up, and I, I know you're sensitive to, which is, if you had a, an army of sign, of enforcement officials, you could, you could get down to that fine grain detail, but you don't, and so you, you can't. So you're either carrying the sign and that's allowed, or you're not.
I mean, that's, I'm, I'm not really interested in shutting down a lot of people's advertising.
Okay, let me rephrase.
Because it's an inexpensive way, and when it's done right, it actually is fairly effective if you're not out there every day, you know, 24/7.
Okay, let me rephrase that. Are we going to prohibit signs carried by persons?
Are you?
Consensus, please.
You're asking the question, I would rather you stay.
Consensus is to prohibit.
A consensus to prohibit signs carried by persons?
Nope.
Didn't pass, and the next consensus is probably, uh, regulation of signs carried by persons, uh, restricted to, I'm making this up, restricted to, uh, commercial districts, uh, and in the manner that does not interfere with the, uh, safe movement of pedestrians and motor vehicles. Reasonable.
Also the right of way, that's another subject.
Question.
Mr. Matthews has a question.
Um, I'm, I'm going to go back to, uh, some discussion we had on the panhandlers that are out there on public right of way with signs requesting money and saying whatever. And we're told that we can't ta, kick them off of public right of ways. Would that apply here to where they have a right to be on that space?
Well, I, I think, you know, if they're engaging in commercial activity, you can regulate the time, place, and manner of that in a way that is safe. Just like you can say, "We don't allow projecting signs from a, from a store below the, you know, eight feet because people walk into them," so, yeah.
Okay. Could you have something you wanted to?
I just wanted to add, um, also to disallow on the right of way.
Motor vehicle right of way?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Add that to what was, Mr.? Yeah.
Exactly.
Was the consensus with?
Yes.
All of that, plus you want to, yes.
Allowed in the commercial districts only, uh, not to interfere with the safe movement of pedestrians and motor vehicles, and not permitted at any time in the, uh, public, in the roadway right of way, motor vehicle right of way.
Correct.
So in the right of way, but not the roadway, is that?
That's important.
Right of way, meaning the roadway.
Yes.
This is a matter of clarification. What non-commercial district do you think this would be appropriate in? Where, where, where would you see a sign spinner in a non-commercial district?
I was saying allow only in commercial districts, in commercial districts. Because that, I mean, that's where you see them.
The question is still, what else would it?
Oh, I, I suppose you, you put it on a, 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 ongoing, it's kind of reacting to the, what I see in real life out there.
Several years ago, we had some sign spinners in front of a park that I think some council members took, um, offense to. So that would, that would be a non-commercial location where, under this motion, they would not be allowed.
Janelle has a question.
In front of a school for a car wash?
Or a church, that's, or a yard.
Yeah, oh, church, too?
Something like that, that's where I was at, too.
Content.
She's just saying it's a spinning, not in a non-commercial areas, content or not.
So, but let's talk about that. If, if advertising a car wash is content, why is not a sign that says buy a pizza here content?
They're both content, and you don't, the, the regulation that, the regulation that you need to design is, is a regulation that doesn't care what the sign says. And so it, so far, the, the motion would do that. What's in front of you is whether, gee, uh, it's the, the, the location, there are some non-commercial locations that, that are sign spinning goes on and for various purposes, and we don't want, we either do or don't want to make that difficult. So, you know, you certainly adjust the, the consensus to, to say, uh, permitted everywhere so long as those safety restrictions. Uh, your point, Councilmember Fitzgerald, is do we really care about prohibiting them in residential districts? It's not going to happen that often, except for the kinds of things that Janelle references, which, you know, we like. And so that's okay, and I'm fine with that. So if you drop out the, in commercial districts only from the consensus, does it buy the works?
All right, so now the consensus is that we allow signs held by people, by persons, right? With the only regulations being that they are not within the public roadway and, and what else was there?
Not to interfere with the safe movement of pedestrians and motor vehicles.
Okay, right, I just want to keep this last to wait, and I've got a lot of hands up, and I'd already given Mr. Urban the first shot at it.
Thank you. Um, I guess as it relates to a pedestrian or an individual, um, interfering in the roadway, don't they have the right of way as the special regardless of what they're carrying?
So can you say that once more?
Uh, as a pedestrian in the roadway, wouldn't they have the right of way as it is, regardless of what they're carrying? And so they, they couldn't necessarily be defined as interfering when any, any pedestrian in the roadway would have, uh, sort of, you'd have to yield to that pedestrian regardless of what they're carrying, right?
You absolutely would, as the, as the, as the driver of the vehicle, you'd have to yield to them. They would, they, their presence means you yield to them. I think that's not triggered or, or precluded by a regulation that says that you're not permitted as, to, to be there. Vehicles have to yield to you because you're a human being and they've got to yield to you. But it doesn't mean that if I'm spinning a sign on 38th Avenue and it's interfering with traffic or not, I'm standing out in the road spinning it, people have to yield to me, and if they hit me, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to win, but it doesn't mean that I can't also be ticketed for, uh, the.
Intentionally.
Have, have, you know, displaying a, a, being a person, uh, carrying a sign in the public right of way in contravention of the cycle.
So I guess, um, are other individuals allowed to be in the roadway? Or is this just as it relates to signs and that?
Well, this is just a sign code, that's right.
I get that, but it's just, it's sort of like, uh, individuals are not allowed to wander through traffic as it is.
They aren't, but you just made the point that if you're out there in traffic, you do have the right of way.
Right, but if I have a small sign on my shirt pocket, then that makes it, uh, my fault? Like, what's, what's the, yeah, I'm just saying, I'm just saying this.
You can have it in, in your pocket, if a person's carrying signs, so that could get, that doesn't get us anywhere.
I'm just, I'm curious as to, number one, how, uh, this particular regulation would be different from as it is now, that you're not allowed to wander through traffic? And then, number two, as it relates to, you know, what constitutes carrying a sign?
We're going to have a comment from, from the chief.
I might just, just add this, you can't step out into a controlled access highway, all right? So people that, uh, you know, panhandle, you know, that step into the exit or entrance ramps, technically be ticketed for interfering with traffic in a controlled access highway.
Okay.
All right, you know, if there is a crosswalk available and people are crossing 38th Avenue mid-block or a Wadsworth mid-block, they could technically be cited for jaywalking, all right? You know, minor violations in terms of the, uh, all of the ordinances and laws that we have to enforce. But, so, uh, you know, my recommendation would, would be not to get too far into the weeds on this because there are traffic laws that apply. You're talking about sign code laws.
Right, that was my concern, is that jaywalking still exists, and if a person carries a sign or not is jaywalking, that we already have a, a code that prohibits that activity. So, um, I'm not sure why we need to further regulate it. And the previous consensus was to not regulate sign spinners, so now we're talking about regulating sign spinners. So, um, I'm not sure why we need to further regulate it, and the previous consensus was to not regulate sign spinners, so now we're talking about regulating sign spinners.
Well, I think the previous consensus was not to prohibit, er, to, are we, are we, and, and I'm fine with the council ending up deciding that not only sign spinners are okay, but you really don't wanna regulate them at all. And that's really your position, that's fine, but I had thought we were going down a somewhat different path, uh, I could be wrong about that, but we, you should probably vote on it, and we can move on to number three.
We need to state it before we vote, so what I understand is, we're talking about permitting sign spinners as long as they, uh, do not impede traffic, and are, uh, well, as long as they do not impede traffic, isn't that what you meant to do?
Or the, or pedestrians, you know, if you've got someone with a stroller that wants to go down the street, and there's a guy there at the intersection, and she can't get to the appropriate place to cross the crosswalk, I, I think you've got a completely legitimate reason to say that that can't happen.
The consensus that's on the table is to allow, um, sign spinners, but not to interfere with safe, that do not interfere with safe movement of pedestrians and vehicles or in public roadway.
And that should be signs carried by persons, correct?
Yes, signs carried.
Okay. Thank you. Consensus.
Right, right of hands for consensus here? I've got three. Mr. Pond, you were wanting to speak, or you can come-
Oh, well, everyone apparently-
They all, they all shoved in the way of it. Are you, do you need?
It's, it's fine, it's a yes, and I, and I think pulling out the commercial districts is, and making it more, making it more universal is, is appropriate, that's what I wanted to say. I also wanted to say that I think that the audience should be happy that that solves the open house issue as well. Just get a sign spinner.
Okay, get a sign spinner, there you go. How does this apply to homeless people with signs? I had to do that, okay, moving on.
Is it same, or are we treated the same?
Treat it the same, all right, so you can stand out there and-
I, I honestly think, one of the points that's been made, and I hate to rely on the court chief, but as with anything else, you, you use your enforcement dollars and tools, uh, uh, you know, effectively. And you could go out, the chief could go out and find everyone driving on Wadsworth right this minute, ninety percent of them speeding, you know, and so the, you understand the point I'm making, that at some point you can invent a hack pattern that is, well, hard to enforce, and, yeah, but in real life, the, what will happen is the egregious circumstances will be the ones ticketed, and the word gets out. And if that happens, and kind of the word's out on what you can do and what you can't do, really achieve what, what you want to with, with any code provision, whether you're giving-
Thank, electronic message centers is-
Yeah, and let me, if I-
Let's move on.
If I might, and I, I think the intent of tonight is simply to get policy direction. I mean, I, I understand the desire to kind of dive into the weeds, and some of that's totally legitimate, but we've got another kind of half dozen that we need to get through, where we're not moving forward, we're doing this again another night, so, to the extent that we can, I mean, we're just trying to look at, for high-level direction tonight, and we'll, you'll have another opportunity to get in the weeds, we've got another study session calendared for later to get into the weeds.
Good, Zach, do you wanna move on?
Yep, electronic message centers, um, we're directed to, to look into this. Uh, during our research, we found that our current standards are misaligned with industry standards in, in two ways. Um, first of all, our code restricts copy changes to no less than every fifteen seconds. Um, what we found is the current industry standard is between four and ten. Um, what we're proposing is that we, um, reduce that to no less than every eight seconds, um, which is actually spot-on with many of our neighboring jurisdictions. Um, and also, we believe balances kind of public safety issues with businesses being able to advertise. Um, so I, I think that's maybe the first question, or, let's see, um, I'll just move into the second issue. Um, the second issue is, let's see, um, oh, our illumination standards are out of date and difficult to enforce. Um, so we are suggesting adding language, which is written into your memo, um, which establishes requirements and measurement techniques. So, this language would require that we buy an illuminance meter, um, for code enforcement to be able to measure the brightness of signs. So, um, I think many times now we get complaints that signs are too bright, um, and we don't really have anything in the code to point back to, to measure that or enforce against that. Um, so, so this would do that. Um, in the code, I think it wrote that the illuminance meter would cost anywhere between a hundred and a thousand dollars. Um, I had a conversation with the supervisor of the code enforcement team, and he thinks it'd be, you know, like, between two and maybe five hundred. Um, so just throwing that out there, um, that that would be maybe an added cost to incorporating that language, but, um, will help solve many of our current issues with those digital electronic message centers. Um, so the two questions at hand are, you know, are, is council supportive of reducing the time required between copy messages from, from no less than every fifteen seconds to no less than every eight seconds? And then, um, is the language as proposed for the brightness standards, um, something that you're comfortable with as well?
I've got Mr. M., who's gonna do this real quick, like first.
I just have a quick question, yes. Now, I don't see anything addressed in here regarding, uh, electronic messaging in, um, residential areas, because we have one right on 32nd, as we know.
Mm-hmm.
And that one has been a, a source of contention in the neighborhood. So is this just generally all over, citywide, whether it's commercial, residential?
Yes, so this would be all over citywide. Um, we do have, so, the one on 38th Avenue is, in the way this code was also, um-
Thirty-second.
Thirty-second, sorry. Um, is a non-residential use in a residential-
Neighborhood, yeah.
Um, which, if you've looked at the draft of the sign code, we have kind of allowed uses by, or allowed signs by use, excuse me. So, that would be allowed to continue because, you know, changeable copy signs are permitted for non-residential uses. Um, so, yes, it applies as a whole, and in that specific example, just for your information, would be allowed to, you know, continue if we built under this draft.
And is there-
As drafted, it would allow us to address the illumination issue that's been a concern, um, in terms of the brightness of the sign.
And are there hour limitations? Like it can go on at nine and then off at six AM?
We don't have that.
We don't have that in here?
Mm-hmm.
But something we could create if it's in a residential neighborhood?
Mm-hmm, time, place, and manner, so.
Okay, because I'd like us to consider that.
It's totally feasible, but I would just say from an enforcement standpoint-
Yeah.
We don't work at ten o'clock at night, and so that, I mean, you're not a full staff of the code enforcement officers, so it becomes difficult to enforce.
They just call me.
Mr. Matthews.
Um, there again, you know, I, the church sign we have right up there is probably in a residential area, so I don't see, you know, there's a lot of usage that would be anticipated to be in a residential area, so that doesn't bother me too much. Um, or I don't know how you regulate it. As, as far as older signs, I don't know if there have been some ad hoc standards to how many of these older signs are existing, might exceed the illumination standards that we're trying to set. Would there be grandfather clauses, or are most of those signs, I'm not sure you can adjust the brightness on them, and I can, I am concerned about that, how do we handle that situation?
They would typically be grandfather, we wouldn't, uh, require them to update to a new technology. Uh, it's certainly possible to amortize requirements and, uh, create a timetable for when they would be required to comply with new regulations.
I don't know, I don't wanna try and make it go out in the weeds. Uh, just to point out that one of the, what you just said was, we can't enforce this because it's at night, but we're talking about bright signs that only are on at night, so we're going to have to have some-
Oh, sure, if, if, if something becomes an issue in terms of it's too bright, uh, we can, you know, address that. I guess what I was suggesting is a, a three-hundred-and-sixty-five-day-a-year restriction that they have to be shut off at ten is gonna be difficult to enforce. But if it's an issue that's coming up at night about duration, yeah, obviously we'd get someone out there at night and determine whether it's not compliant, if it is, we seek enforcement.
My issue all along has been brightness, and what I hear you saying, though, is that the, what I regard as the prime offenders are gonna be allowed to skate, uh, because they're gonna be grandfathered, is that what you said?
I said, the default position is that we wouldn't make these provisions retroactive, uh, you know, code doesn't apply retroactively typically. Uh, but certainly there's precedent, and Jerry can opine on this, of, of treating signs differently, that they can have an amortization period of, say, five years, or two years, or whatever seems reasonable, uh, and a court would agree would be reasonable, of how quickly they would have to bring some component of the sign into compliance with the new requirement. So it is, it is possible to have them be somewhat retroactive.
Probably not fully perched, say, retroactive in that sense because you're reaching back, but, but giving them a period of time, amortization going forward. Can't amortize whole uses in Colorado, I mean, when the legislature's said that, but this isn't a whole use, it's, it's the sign on top of a roof. Lakewood had rooftop signs a long time ago. They don't have any anymore because they enacted a amendment and had an amortization period of, like, five years. And the last one was the Lebbets sign on the roof of a Lebbets furniture store. Remember that big oval sign? They had to, they had to, uh, litigate it, but they won because they were able to amortize out rooftop signs, and there are few communities do anymore, but they had some. And that's an example of how to do that, and you could, if you wish. And you can amortize not just the whole sign, but aspects of it, you know, the, in any way you wanna, kind of, graphics, or any way you wanted to hide, or any way you wanted to. And that would leave some non-conforming aspects that were maybe less of a concern.
I'd like to make consensus, uh, to support, uh, what staff had requested of regarding these signs to limit that they don't, um, switch out, um, less than eight seconds, and also that there is some type of, um, lighting, um, standard, and that we also amortize that, perhaps, at two years, uh, two years for that.
Any questions?
I would say that would be implied, I guess, because-
Um, as it relates to the illumination measurement process, um, my understanding is that, that would be based on both the square footage of the sign and also the distance-
Correct.
On the sign, and that, is that sort of elucidated into the code, or is that just by practice of the city staff? Or how does the, the, does every sign get tested, or only those signs which are, are the subject of a complaint get tested, or how do we do that?
I don't think we, we know the details of, of that, um, Mr. Urban. Um, I mean, we do, a lot of our code enforcement right now is complaint-based, so that, you know, given staffing resources, that would probably, um, generally be, um, kind of, the oper, operating mode that we're in, but-
Okay.
Um, some of these things would be reviewed in the first instance in terms of the, the issuance of a permit to make sure that has the appropriate technology.
Right, and I guess, um, as it relates to illumination, um, whether it's based on the use of that meter or otherwise, that there's some sort of consideration for the ambient light around the sign in, in a neighborhood. The ambient light would be more than likely darker than in a commercial district, and therefore, in a commercial district, the light might be, the use, the MCs might be, uh, brighter in a commercial district as opposed to, uh, a residential area that may require to be a little bit darker just based on the ambient light. So, just wanna make sure that that's considered as a part of it.
You didn't say.
Nope, unless somebody wants to do. Yep, so, are we agreeing with the consensus? All right, good.
To your end.
So may I have just one quick question, kind of playing it order that I think we've, we've, uh, asked, or kind of commented on? This is gonna come back, correct? So, my understanding is we're kind of just giving, um, general direction, and then, as far as some of the things on, you know, ambient light and-
Yep.
Commercial, and those kinds of things, you'll come back in more detail of what, like, standards are within our community?
Yeah, we, we will, and, uh, that's absolutely correct.
Yeah, I think in our next steps, we're at study session if necessary, I don't think it's necessary, so we'll, we'll do that in another one.
You know, it says, is council supportive of this approach? It, it's kind of a generalization. Do we include these signs?
Yeah, so, um, at council's direction, we looked into, um, iconic signage, I think it was Councilwoman Hoppy, who mentioned, you know, a business perhaps having like a large hammer for their sign. Um, so we looked into these kind of sculptural, three-dimensional signs. Um, a couple communities are, um, have contemplated these. Um, when I asked for information, they didn't really have much, so we kind of were on our own here. Um, but essentially, you know, it'd be something like what's on the screen here, a three-D coffee cup coming off of a, a sign, or off of a building. Um, so, wha, what staff is proposing, um, would be to limit these to freestanding signs and blade signs, so the ones coming off buildings like this. Um, we did a little analysis, um, so, you know, for this commercial space here, you'd be allowed this size of a, of a two-D monument sign. Um, and we played around with some numbers, and what, what these show is one-point-seven-five times the allowed two-D signage for three-D signs. Um, so, that's what we're recommending, like, one-point-five, one-point-seven-five times the two-D allowance as measured in cubic feet. Um, I don't explain that, I don't know the best way to, to verbalize that, um, but-
So if you're allowed a hundred square feet in a two-dimensional, uh, monument sign, we're proposing that you'd be allowed a hundred-and-seventy-five cubic feet in a three-D sign. And that's what that-
Right, yeah, so these are one-point-seven-five times this allowed, this allowance in cubic feet.
Shorter and less wide because of-
Right.
Because it's got depth to it.
Mm-hmm, yep.
How's that?
Yep.
Yes, just one question, so this is three-D, but I know we talked about that infamous, like, cat sign, so what if your sign had a shape? I mean, is a monument sign considered a sign with a shape? So let's pretend my sign looked like a dog, right there, but it's still, it's still two-D, it's not three-D, but it looks like a dog.
That's probably one of those things that we're playing around with the definitions, as when does a two-D become a three-D? I think what we've suggested is if it, if it's, if the third dimension is greater than a foot, then it becomes three-D. So if your dog, if yours is an outline of a dog, but it's generally in two dimensions, then it would still be in two dimensions, and it'd be calculated that way.
So, is council supportive of this approach? Thank you. How about that, we did a record one.
Wow.
Off-premise signage.
Great, off-premise signs, um-
Consensus?
Yeah. Um, so, as we have discussed in length, we have to be content neutral, however, in order to enforce against an off-premise sign, you have to read the content to know it's off-premise. Um, so as Ken alluded to a little bit earlier, um, we kind of played around with how we might still be able to, to somewhat regulate off-premise signage, um, but be in compliance with Reed versus Gilbert. So what we have proposed is, um, that the owner of the sign and the owner or lessee of a property must be the same person. Um, so, in, in practice, we would collect proof of ownership or proof of lease with a, with a sign permit, um, which we already do for land lease applications, so it's not, not that far of a departure from, from what we currently do. Um, now, certainly what, um, I think I've discussed with Patrick is, someone who has allowed some signage on their property could put whatever they want on the sign because we can't regulate content. Um, so, that is still a possibility. Um, so I don't, I don't know, uh, if you are supportive of our, our approach, um, to gather, you know, ownership or lessee documentation from folks? Um, even if that may or may not curb off-premise signage, I guess, maybe.
In this instance, well, what would prohibit Subway from renting that three-square-foot post?
Right.
I think it would be questionable of, and maybe Doll has an opinion on this, but, um, of, of whether we determine that to be an adequate leasehold interest in the property. I mean, I think we'd have some discretion to say, uh, you- I mean, I think we'd have some discretion to say, you know, occupying a one-square-foot leasehold interest is not sufficient to meet the intent of our definition of, in this section of the code.
And you could use the parcel, you know, which is the described legal parcel for that address, and say it's got to be owned by the parcel owner, so that you didn't have a... And I went there too, right away, I thought, okay, how about, but you could, you could, as you construct the regulations, you could see the parcel. The parcel owner has to, and that's a larger, larger space. And I agree with the point Zach was making, that yes, I could advertise a business somewhere else on my sign, but, you know, at some point, do you really care? You know, again, if you don't care, if you're not in the business of really worrying about what people say on the sign, then, you know, do you really care that they're wasting their precious signage, you know, directing people elsewhere? At some point, you're below the level that you care about. Most cities have off-premise sign prohibitions to kind of reduce the clutter, especially on the edges of town, directing people in, kind of thing. That's a much bigger problem, I think, in counties than it is in cities. I think if you say you've got it on the parcel where the sign is, that you're getting 90-plus percent of the problems that you would otherwise get with a more traditional off-premise sign restriction, and I think actually good enough, you know, really.
Okay. And then I guess my related question is related to wayfinding signs that the city puts up for city facilities, so that would be an off-premise sign for city facilities, but that's...
We're accommodating those elsewhere in the code.
Directional signs, and there's room in the opinion for, some room for governmental and directional signs in the opinion, not only the opinion, but all the concurring opinions, in Reed versus Gilbert, because they're two, three of them. I think that's pretty safe territory, as long as cities don't try to make a huge play out of that exception. I think that wayfinding signs are going to be fine.
And then the signs on the highway relative to the blue signs that, not necessarily hospital, but next rest stop has McDonald's, such-and-such, and another restaurant, but my understanding of those requires that they have a certain criteria, like a public bathroom and the like, so those would be an off-premise sign, but that wouldn't be included, because it's kind of regulated by the state, government.
Yeah, there's a state program called TODS, the Tourist Oriented Directional Signs, that permits that, and I haven't heard that that program's in trouble. My take is if it gets in trouble, it's the state fits in it to make it comply with Reed. I haven't heard anyone challenging it.
I just wanted to ask Zach, what alternatives did you discuss in this regard?
Eliminating the off-premise signage allowance? I mean, currently, it's in the code, so we started off with, it's gone because it's content-based, and then we thought that we would, we brainstormed, and I think Ken kind of sparked this idea, that we wanted to propose to you and see, you know, if we wanted to address it this way, or just get rid of off-premise signage as a sound category altogether.
Make that clarification, which is that our choice is to kind of do the limbo that's, or some variation of the limbo that's suggested in here, or essentially eliminate our prohibition of off-premise signs, because we cannot, the only way you can determine it's off-premise is by reading the content. So those are your choices, kind of do the, do the limbo, or, you know, just don't allow off-premise signs.
Are you suggesting that, or?
I'm not, I'm...
You're just trying to...
I'm suggesting I would actually be supportive of this approach, and see how it develops towards our future discussions. Actually, that would be mine. I'll make that consensus.
Are we good there?
Good. The council is supportive of this approach, as it's written.
Okay, business district signs.
This came up during our May study session as well. Staff envisions regulating these as public signage, as we just mentioned. There's somewhat of a carve-out for states to put up regulatory signs, I mean, cities and states to put up regulatory signs, and, you know, items of the public interest, I think, if you could phrase that. So we feel it would be appropriate to provide an administrative policy in coordination with Public Works, to establish what constitutes a qualified business district, and then standards for the signs, in terms of size, color, location, things like that. So these are two examples that I know of in Denver, pointing you to two different districts. As you can see, the signs are pretty much obviously taken at different angles, but they're pretty much the same size, color, you know, there's obviously a standard font, pointing you to establish district in the city. So we would, you know, kind of contemplate this sort of concept for our business district signage. And I think that was more informational, but I guess if you want to...
I mean, no objections, I think, is...
Right. Like you said, the details of this program will be presented to council in the future.
It does say that, yes.
It does say that.
Yes. Okay, so then, now we're going to move into other items. So these are items, as we started to get into the sign code, you didn't ask us to address, we didn't say that we were going to address, but ended up being, raising eyebrows essentially, that we wanted some clarification from you on. Great, thanks. So the new content-neutral yard sign category is proposed and intended to capture some of the removed content-based sign categories, such as political signs and community event signs. Staff recommended the limitation of one small yard sign per property. However, as is evidenced by this picture, which is not Wheat Ridge, I'm sure we're not getting political signs on Wheat Ridge. During certain times of the year, it may be appropriate to allow more than one. So as a starting point, staff recommends perhaps allowing three signs, three small yard signs, between October 1st and November 30th. This specifically is geared towards election signs, where you want to support your mayor, and also your US senator, and if it's a presidential, you're the president, and, you know, have more than just one, you know, whoever you like the most, I guess, I don't know, in your yard, so... You know, like, these folks are supporting this guy for city council, and this person for mayor. I actually don't know who these people are, even though they're mayor, so I thought it was appropriate just to throw it up there, but, you know, it feels appro, it is, yeah. So, and I've seen it a lot around Wheat Ridge right now, too, with council and mayor elections, many folks have more than one sign on their property. So we thought we would ask you about that first, before we just come through it, and then...
Three's not enough. What's going on in a federal election at the same time? I could easily see five or six.
Yeah, I agree too. Plus, what's a small sign? What size is a small sign? There's different sizes of campaign signs.
And you're referring to during election times, when you're saying three is not enough? Other than that, you're okay with one sign? Your roofing sign? Okay. One is okay at this point?
So a small yard sign is not to exceed four square feet. So I'm, there's been a lot of work that went into this code. I'm pretty sure I looked up a typical political ad sign, and made it slightly larger, just in case.
There's regulations. I think Janelle could strike, if I'm wrong, of how large a sign can be, correct? So...
You mean, what we have right now, existing now, there's like two, is it four square feet, and then eight and 16 is the big, large one in commercial?
Okay, so...
I don't have that off the top of my head.
But I just know that there is something out there, so if it matches, I just don't want it to contradict.
I'll take a look at that.
Also, I think we have political signs have to be down by a certain time also, and I don't think that's November 30th. I don't know if we maybe want to consider November 30th as...
Yeah, I would say, if anything, I would slide, I might slide this back. I do believe that it may be seven or 10 days, or something like that, that we, that, you know, so we would be potentially conflicting a little bit with that.
10 days after the election, is that right?
Yeah, exactly. So, I don't know, I'm not sure it has to go all the way to November 30th, you know, maybe it's the 15th, and frankly, I would slide it back a little bit, then allow a little bit of room in September, you know?
Okay. I would not be in favor of this regulation, however, as it relates to the timeframe, I think that if you're going to have a timeframe, that it needs to be able to coincide with either the candidate affidavit or other timetable as it relates to the elections, because October 1st is not the start of the elections. It's well before that, when the candidates are filed or otherwise. So to allow candidates to exist without residents being able to put a sign in the yard is somewhat limiting, I would imagine. So I would say that it would be for, and at the same time, the elections that we're talking about are only our city elections. You're not talking about the fire districts, you're not talking about other districts that have elections in May, or other times of the year, so...
And we talked about that. I mean, again, it's one of these challenges of how you deal with content neutral, right? Because in the alternative, we could just allow five yard signs year-on, and, you know, that's an option. But it would make it easier. It just, you don't know what, what those signs are going to say, right? I mean, they may have, they may identify commercial businesses, they may, I mean, they could identify whatever they want to identify.
In general, I'm a little leery on residential restrictions. I haven't made up my mind yet, I'm waiting to hear more arguments, but I'm not sure I can support this at all. Just, and I, I got to think about it, I process slow, so...
To what Mr. Matthews was saying, you know, if we say yard signs, and, like, we use the word yard signs, in residential areas, because that might also support, although I'm not supposed to talk about content, it might support the need of realtor type of uses. We don't limit it to a number.
So there is an allowance for yard signs small, and then yard signs large. So when we originally made these categories, the small was meant to kind of capture political signs and community sponsorship signs, I think it was, whereas the yard sign large was meant to capture, it was like construction signs, you know, when folks put a construction sign outside their property, or the real estate signs. I forget what other ones fall under the category, but that one, the real estate signs were contemplated within the yard large category.
But then, I guess, the thing is, is if we limit, if we say, okay, you can have multiple ones, only this amount of time, then, you know, I guess, I mean, for lack of just saying it out loud, it's kind of like, oh, we're working it to be politic, you know, so we can politically campaign. But if we don't limit it, like, to from September to November, then we could allow, then a realtor to put an open house sign on my house on the corner, and kind of, you know, meet that need? You know, like what we talked about earlier, about that they can't post more than one sign, but if we allow for the yard signs, kind of wayfinding, then that would be a way to kind of, I know I'm not supposed to talk about content, but I think here, you're kind of talking about content too. So I just wonder if you limit it in commercial, as Mr. Matthews was saying, is that you just let people in commercial be, I mean, in residential be...
Yeah, so I'm kind of thinking along the same lines as Christie and Larry there, for residential. I mean, if you're going to limit the signs to three, only from October 1st to November 30th, and if somebody... Right. You know, sometimes people need to put their signs out, you know, seven months ahead of time. I mean, it's a necessary evil for whatever it is that they're doing, and it's on their property. So if somebody wants to have five signs on their property, or six, or seven, depending on what the issues are that year, they should be able to, so...
And that's fine, I mean, if that's the consensus of council...
That's how I feel about this.
We could place no limits on yard signs, we could place a limit of five, but we can't look at content, right? So content, right? So that, that could be five political issues, it could be five subway signs, right?
On their personal property? Okay.
So...
All right, so therefore, consensus has changed now?
Let me just reinforce with Mr. Doll. So we're categorizing these things as types, sign types, but can we carve out a political type?
No.
No, at all?
You have to, you have to read it...
Read the content.
To figure that out.
You're not, well...
Yeah. Because sort of shape, size, height, these are all things that don't relate to content, you don't have to care what it says, but the minute you say, you create a type, political type, you have to read it to know that it's that height.
I would like to make a consensus not to limit yard signs in residential areas.
Sounds good. Freestanding signs.
The current sign code allows for freestanding signs to be supported by either a monument style base, so this guy over here, or a pole, so this guy right here. In an effort to improve the visual impact associated with signs, and to enhance the character of the community, council asked whether, or asked to consider whether the regulations for new signs should only permit monument type. So currently, where we see this in the code is in our mixed-use districts, only new, or freestanding, new freestanding signs can only be monument, they can't be pole. So we are, we noted that, and we were just wondering, council wanted to expand that to all new signs should be monument in that pool, or kind of what is your thought on that?
Member of the Wheat Ridge Business District, would you like to comment?
And Wheat Ridge Business District has a lot of problems around this very issue. And we attempt to force people to get monument signs. One of the problems we have is the grandfather problem. So I sure would like to be able to address that grandfather problem, that if somebody wants to remove their sign that is a pole sign, we're going to, we are unfortunately going to give them a grant to do that, even though we don't want the pole sign. So if there was some way to regulate monument signs, I would be in favor of that. I'm generally in favor of monument signs. How does, how does this apply to areas like shopping centers, where they're trying to get five, or 10, or 15 different store owners on one sign, and in a sense, it becomes a pole sign almost, because it's going to be 15 feet in there?
Yeah, so I think a good example would be the Sprouts Center on 30th and Kipling. They have a, what is considered a monument sign with multiple tenants listed, I guess not 10 or 15, but it is possible to do that with a monument style sign.
The shopping center up there in Havana, just north of Y70, has got a 20-foot-tall sign or something with, that's fairly, there's 30 or 40 different stores in there.
Mr. Matthews, one way that we can address that under the existing code, and the proposed code, is through what's called a master sign plan. So click recrossing, for an example, the project that's moving forward, we, Zach and I met with him on Friday to talk about some of our comments on their zoning documents. They're doing a master sign plan as part of that entitlement process, so they'll get some sort of approval for things just like that, right? So signs that otherwise wouldn't be allowed, but are needed for projects like that, and it's just a process that goes for the planning commission for approval, so that's a pretty, has been a pretty successful. The Sprouts project did a master sign plan that got them those monuments as well.
It should also be noted that in relation to the highway, just since that one is close to the highway, they, our sign does allow for 50-foot-tall pole signs within a quarter mile of the freeway, so we're not asking to touch those. the freeway. So we're not asking to touch those. Just kind of need to be what they are. This is just kind of, you know, 30th and Sims or wherever there's a need for these signs.
So two questions. You know, do we want to make a requirement that monument signs is the standard? And then the next question that's coming up related to that is, if that's the policy direction, do you want to take that to a further level, which would be to require that pole signs in their non-conforming status gets amortized, so that we get rid of those in a more expedited manner if we just let them continue to be?
I would certainly agree with that, except that we have to make the amortization extremely generous, because a lot of these signs are unbelievably old and people don't want them present. So we have to make it very, very long-term.
Quite the cost of monument signs over pole signs, too. Anyone else on this? Are we, are we ready for the question? The question, um... Am I got the wrong one? Oh, I'm down wrong. I didn't-
I follow my own questions. So, um... Yeah, so what we're talking about here is for new development or total redevelopment, should new freestanding signs be required to be monument signs?
Be monument. New development, should we require them to make or create monument signs? Simple. Let's start with that one.
I just have a question. I'll make it quick. So we just had a new upgraded area, and I'm just thinking McDonald's. They, that's not a monument sign, and it's a brand-new sign. And we're going to say, okay, we just allowed you to do a pole sign a year ago, and we're going to make you amortize it and do it later?
That's second question.
But I think, I mean, I think that's a perfect example. I mean, that's a brand-new darn sign. And it's like, no, that's not cool, in my opinion. So that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, that is the second question, because specifically it's for new. So we're not talking about amortization. The consensus, you know, is just for new signs. Second question is amortization. So that sign would not be affected by this consensus at all. It just says anything moving forward would be monument.
But I guess my next question on that, just for clarification, is if Christie's Bakery rolls into O'Reilly Auto Parts and I put a new thing in there, am I a new business or can I use that sign?
Second question, though. If we could, the first question is for new development, are we-
New development, not necessarily a new business on a property. Okay, all right.
This is, total redevelopment, what is that? Is that more than 50%?
It says totally.
We can get kind of more detail on that when we come back to you again, but as a policy matter, do you want to move in the direction of monument signs versus pole signs?
All right. I've got a consensus on that. Now, can we move to the second question? Should all new freestanding signs, including those not associated with new development or total redevelopment, be required to be monument signs?
It's a new sign, but not on a brand-new development. But it's a brand-new sign.
That include McDonald's that we were just talking about?
That's the next question, which is what to do with this new pole signs?
So this would be, this would be if McDonald's came in, they're not tearing down their business, they're not redeveloping, but they want a new sign. They're tearing down their pole sign. Are they allowed a new pole sign, or do they have to have a monument sign?
I have a question.
This is at the, at the time of decision whether they're going to redevelop. It doesn't mean we go in there and say, your sign's out of there.
How does this relate to blade signs or signs on the side of a building, or where there's no space for a monument sign to exist?
So these are only freestanding-
This is freestanding signs.
Only, okay.
Right.
We're looking for a consensus. Three, three. I, I am not, yeah, I'm going to vote no on this, just because I have sat at business district meetings and heard the cost of some of these, and it sometimes blocks them from putting up a new sign. And we don't want that to happen. So...
Okay, so on a related note, which I think we've touched on a little bit, non-conforming signs, which are often too tall, too close to the right-of-way, too big, or pole-mounted where monument is already required, such as in the MUN zone districts, all those are required to be monument. Would we, let's see. So essentially with this sign here, you know, it's maybe a foot off the right-of-way and is way too tall, then would be allowed, pretending it's in Wheat Ridge. So if a new business came in, they could change out this face, it'd still be allowed to keep the pole sign too close to the right-of-way and way too tall. I believe we added this because it's been asked before, and it kind of goes in line with the questions that we just asked, is, you know, if folks are making significant investment in signage in their businesses, should they come to compliance with the current sign regulations? So, you know, as we just heard consensus, they wouldn't have to do a monument sign. They could still do a pole sign, but set it back to the appropriate setback and reduce the height to the allowed height. In this example.
Okay, are you already voting? Okay. Man, they just moved right along. I hardly even got, figured out what they're talking about. Okay. All right, we're down to the rest of them. Changeable copy.
Yeah, so we have noted an increased interest in changeable copy LED signs, so this guy again, citywide. So most locations, they are allowed. They are not allowed in the mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use commercial TOD zone districts. So most of 38th Avenue, and then some few spots, like this purple color. And then the TOD is obviously up by our award road station area. So the changeable copy LED signs are not allowed. We're seeing a lot of interest along 38th Avenue for these signs. So we told folks that we would come and ask you, since the sign code was open, if this is something that you want to reconsider. I think the intent of this restriction was to encourage signs, sign designs that are more pedestrian-oriented in nature, despite the current kind of non-conforming development, you know, with the mixed-use code, patterns being more vehicular in nature. So we're just asking if council wants to kind of reaffirm that this restriction is still appropriate, based on the purpose envisioned for the zone districts in subway areas, like 38th Avenue and the TOD area.
So the question is?
Status quo is we continue to not allow changeable copy LED in those two specific zone districts, or any other direction that council would provide to be more permissive.
I would ask for consensus that we consider doing away with the prohibition of LED signs in those districts.
Doing away with the-
Doing away with the prohibition and such, to allow.
Do you want to discuss it? Three? Well, I'll go the other way. I would like to continue with the past as it currently is.
We just-
It is currently-
Right.
Yes, I'm going along with the status quo.
Oh, he, Larry's made a consensus.
Yeah, it was a tied vote. Good God.
Okay, so we'll incorporate this and come back to you and go back to the planning commission.
Thank you. That's, those are challenging things, so appreciate you getting to that.
Good job, Zach.
Mr. John Stone, could I ask you to, since I'm supposed to have people give me the wording to motions, could I get you or someone from your staff to send me a summary of the, what was agreed to on each of those sign categories?
The conclusions?
Yes.
Somebody, somebody sent it to me, because I'm sure I missed things.
All right, the answer is yes. Council Chief Brennan has something else. Do you want to-
Yeah, sorry to do this to you at this late hour, but it's very time sensitive. We need to get a quick update on the body worn camera grant that we received. We told you we'd bring back some information on some of the long-term cost of if we do move forward. There's a deadline of when we need to accept the grant, so we need to get some direction from council.
Thank you, Patrick. So I'm going to go through this quickly. If you have any questions, please, please ask. If you remember in 2015, we presented, I presented to city council during the 2016 budget discussion, whether or not council wanted to move forward with purchasing body worn cameras. We talked about the challenges with body worn cameras from a financial perspective, personnel perspective, and a policy perspective. And council's direction then was to, was to wait and for the department to participate in any grant opportunities. There was an existing grant opportunity for 2016. We submitted a grant application to the Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and we were not successful in that first grant effort. However, we received a lot of good feedback on our grant application, which put us in a position in 2017 to resubmit a grant application. The difference in the 2017 grant submission was that the Department of Justice was looking for collaborative grant applications. In other words, they wanted more than one department to submit for a grant application. So we approached the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, the Arvada Police Department, the Lakewood Police Department, and the Golden Police Department to see if there was any interest in a collaborative grant. Jefferson County Sheriff's Office had already budgeted money and was in the process of procuring body worn cameras, so they weren't as interested in this opportunity. Lakewood had made the decision financially that this time they weren't going to move forward with body worn cameras. And Arvada had made the decision in 2015 that it was too costly, prohibited, and there were still too many issues with body worn cameras. Golden, on the other hand, was very interested in pursuing a grant, collaborative grant application. So we submitted a grant in April 2017. On September 30th, we received a notification from the Department of Justice that we had been approved for a two-year collaborative grant in the amount of $458,130. That grant amount has two categories included in it. The first is $172,500 in direct costs. This is the grant funding. This is the funding we, Golden and Wheat Ridge, would receive from the federal government. And the other $285,630 is an indirect cost paid by the grant applicants. That would be Golden and Wheat Ridge. So the $172,500 would be for the body worn cameras and all the costs associated with the body worn cameras. So Wheat Ridge was requesting 70 cameras, and the grants had a cost limitation of $1,500 for each camera. So that would be the cost for the camera, vacuum station, storage, licensing, all of the costs related to that camera over a two-year period of time. The indirect costs will be primarily for personnel. We will need a new position to manage the video content that these body worn cameras will create. We'll also pay for a workstation for that position and the computer equipment that they need. We can take that out of existing budgeted funds, and we'll need to pay for training as well, which can be included in the training that we do department-wide. The grant requires that two people from each organization go back to Washington DC for specific training around body worn cameras and grant applications. At the conclusion of the two-year grant cycle, we would assume all of the costs for the personnel, the indirect costs and the direct costs. So on page two of my document, I've tried to lay out what those costs would look like for a five-year period of time. You'll notice here that the total hardware and evidence costs for 2018 and 2019 don't quite add up to the 70 cameras at $1,500 each. And that's because the costs that we were quoted earlier in the year have changed, and we still have about $5,000, $6,000 left to try to find a way to spend out of, out of those grant dollars. But we've had to readjust some of our figures. But I've broken the cost down in terms of hardware and evidence, so that's licensing, storage, all of the hardware and software required for the body worn cameras, the records management, specialist salary and benefits, a new position. That includes a 3% increase per year for the five-year period of time, the training costs and the workstation costs, which will essentially be a, be a one-time cost. So in year one, the total cost for the program will be $132,565. The grant will pay for almost $63,000. The police department or the city will have to pay $69,836 or $70,000 in terms of the cost. If you take that out of year two, it'll show what the grant pays. The costs in year two are considerably less. Those costs are mostly for storage. And for the assurance plan that comes with these body worn cameras, that's essentially sort of a lease maintenance plan. So we'll buy 70 cameras, and over the course of two and a half to three years, we will pay a fee on those cameras. So at the end of the lifetime of those cameras, we will get a new set of cameras. And we'll continue to pay sort of these lease payments for, for future cameras. Otherwise, if we just purchase them ourselves, we would be in the process of continuing to have to purchase cameras. The technology on these cameras is changing about every three years, and they continue to add new things for them. That is, is, is pretty much, you know, the overview on that. There are some policy issues, I think, that, you know, council had previously been concerned about in terms of body worn cameras. Those are essentially, you know, what do you do when a camera, what do you do with privacy issues when you make a decision to turn the camera on or off? How do you establish storage guidelines for recorded video? Having processes in place to redact video to protect the privacy of victims and others, and having a process to notify the public when they're being recorded. Those issues are all in our current policy. Part of this process for this grant requires us to participate in policy development. I went to DA's office for this grant and got a letter from the Public Defender's Office. They were in support of us seeking this particular grant. And they have had some input in our, as well, in our policy development. So, you know, there are a lot of different feelings about should we have grants, shouldn't we have grants, from your police chief's perspective? Not grants, cameras. It's after 10, so I'm losing it here. I've heard a lot about signs, and they're on my mind. So as it, as it comes to, you know, the issue of cameras, I think that they can help, you know, develop trust in a community, but they come with a cost. There is an expense related to cameras, not only a hard dollar cost, but also personnel costs to go with that to manage, you know, the video. If you can, if you could think of just this interaction I'm having with you tonight, and times that by, you know, 25, 30 officers working a day, every contact that they have out there, you know, could potentially be, you know, a recorded episode that has to be booked in the property, retention schedule set around that, and a decision made is, is that just a contact that needs to be kept for 45 days and can be deleted, or does it need to be kept for the life of a particular criminal case? Gets to be really, really complicated and cumbersome. So I'd be happy to answer the questions. I really need consensus from you all, whether or not you would like to proceed with the grant and the conditions of the grant, or no, you don't want to do that, so I can let Golden know where we stand at the grant, whether So I'd like Golden to know where we stand with the grant and whether we accept the grant. We have to accept the grant here within the next two weeks.
Well, none of these costs are included in the budget, but as the chief laid out, I asked him to put together at least a five-year process in it, and he briefly discussed that. So year five, year three, four, after year two, the costs are totally to the city. The grant will run out, so we're looking at about $100,000 a year in year five, you know, with a probably three to five percent increase annually on top of that. So this is not included in the budget yet.
It's on the 218 budget that we... I got a hands-up. I, I'm going to assume...
Thank you. In the memo, it indicates that the estimated funding for this two-year grant is $458,000, but then it goes on to say $285,000 is to be paid for by the applicant. So how is that a grant if we're the ones paying?
So there are direct and indirect costs associated with a lot of grants. That's the conditions of this particular grant, or they will fund the purchase of body-worn cameras. We have to have matching funds, and those would be, you know, the costs that are matching funds for this particular grant.
And then, my next question is for the city clerk, Janelle. In a given meeting, how long does it take you to devise the minutes of that meeting on average, do you know? For a city council or for a study session meeting?
Like, for tonight, how many minutes?
Like, how long would it take you to devise those minutes?
For tonight's meeting? It's going to take pretty long.
We're off-subject.
No, no, we're not.
It's got, that's...
It pertains to the situation where with officers being recorded, they're no longer able to devise minutes or summary of what they're doing. They actually have to transcribe verbatim the interactions that they have with individuals, whereas our city clerk is allowed to, you know, devise minutes of what happened. Whereas when the officers are interacting on camera, they're now going to have to transcribe verbatim every interaction, so that if it does go to court, then that would be part of that record and then...
We don't have to transcribe that. So, you know, the officer certainly can view the video, but the report that they, you don't have to, the reports that officers have to write are transcriptions of every interaction that, you know, that occurs. You know, it's a general summary. It might have specific statements in it that help establish probable cause for reasonable doubt, but they won't have to transcribe everything that they see.
Well, not everything that they see, of course, but it does concern me the time and effort that it takes to go from a general statement in a report previously, whereas now it's a video recording, and that video recording has, you know, the specific back-and-forth that they would more than likely want to include in their report. And my point being is that it's going to require a lot more detail and effort on the part of the officers to recap these events now that they've been recorded.
Yeah, that hasn't been, been our experience with our pilot programs, Zach. I'm not saying that it might not occur. Certainly, you know, officers have the opportunity when they're writing a report to go back and view that, but that hasn't been the, that hasn't been an outcome of a current pilot program in terms of having to go through that process and taking more time.
Ahead, Mr. Ed, yeah.
I just wanted to say that I supported this in 2015, and I support it now. I feel it's just another tool that our police department will have moving forward, and I would be giving consensus to move forward with this. Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
In the most general sense, I'm just going to kind of make an assumption in the form of a question, because there is the recommendation at the bottom of this to ask in for consensus to move forward with that. And so my assumption is that the liabilities, whatever they may be, operational liabilities, legal liabilities, or, you know, any of these liabilities are more than, you know, offset by, including the cost liabilities, are more than offset by the value of the body-worn cameras and that, you know, what you found in your pilot program and what you expect in the future. And I guess I just want to, you know, affirmation of that, that you come to your recommendation looking at both sides of the equation and feel like we're going to come out ahead.
Yeah, I think that we will get a lot of value out of this, and it will be beneficial to this, to this community.
Any other comments? If not, I would need a consensus to either move forward, accept the grant. And we do have that consensus.
Okay, thank you.
I have no elected officials' reports, but if, I'm sure if you'll excuse me, Tim, I'm going to take a humanity break.
I do have a report. I wanted to extend an invitation. This is by citizens' request. Council Matthews and myself will be having a meeting this Saturday, October 21st, from nine to 11:00 at the Wheat Ridge Senior Resource Center at 3227 Chase Street. Citizens have requested a meeting to discuss our bulk plane and different questions they may have, to kind of be prepared for the meeting on November 20th here at a study session. So all are invited. Thank you.
Did you say this Saturday?
Correct.
Just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, at 1435 Northwest 32nd Avenue in Golden, that's right across the street from the golf course, there is going to be a school board candidate forum. All five candidates will be there. Everybody, welcome.
Boarding commission dinners. I've been requested to get verification. One, two, three, four. All of you will be at the boarding commission dinners, and I'll have to throw. You have RSVP? Everybody, change. I don't think you...
If council member Duran could grab their, in that stuff that I brought in tonight, there's a program for each of you, so that you can look and see where... If you could pass those out, that would be much appreciated. Thank you.